Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Strategic Planning Council Committee of the whole for May twelfth, twenty twenty five. All public meetings are live streamed and recorded. Any verbal or written information provided may be included in public documents as per the Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act FOIP forty dash one. So with that, I'll call this meeting to order at nine oh seven. We have an agenda before us. Looking for an adoption of the agenda, Councilor Northcott, thank you. All those in favor? And the motion's carried. Moving on now to the adoption of minutes of the strategic plan, uh, plan, of the planning, Strategic Planning Council Committee of the whole for January twentieth, twenty twenty five minutes. Any hours or missions in those minutes? Uh, thank you, Councilor Melhoff moves to adopt those minutes. All those in favor? And that motion is carried. Now moving on to corporate services for item four point one is the restricted surplus twenty twenty five through to twenty twenty eight. Pass that over to, um, I believe Ms. Serrano, please.
Good morning, Strategic Planning Committee. Before you today is just an introduction to the day and an overall summary of where the restricted surplus sits as far as which projects have been identified as being funded through restricted surplus. It's exactly the same documents that were attached to the council agenda at the previous council meeting. So there's no new information here. We just want to make sure that we're understanding that there is a funding source issue and that, you know, there will be decisions that need to be made as this committee moves forward through twenty twenty five and beyond. So just in the background, um, there were during the meeting, uh, at the last council meeting, there were several asks before council to increase spending in twenty twenty five. Three of them, specifically the Rocky Gas Co-op, um, ask, the community health construction ask in the Caroline and District Egg and Recreation Society ask. Due to no tax rate increase being approved, the two options available are to reallocate some of the restricted surplus accounts to accomplish the additional twenty twenty five spends or or adventure for one or more of these projects. In addition, there was six hundred thousand dollars, um, additional tax revenue that will be generated in twenty twenty five above the budget. So that is also an option, although it doesn't fund any of the, um, or all of the projects that were before council at the last council meeting. These options still leaves the next council with decisions to make for prioritization of operational programs and projects within capital projects, um, with the need for additional funding sources. Also operational projects, um, you know, the more projects that gets added, the more funds that need to be spent and the more funds that need to be either generated or borrowed. And even in the, in the, um, debenture option, tax revenue would need to be generated to, um, pay those principal and interest payments over the next years that, um, however long the debenture is taken out for. So again, just briefly going through the restricted surplus summary sheet, you can see that, um, where the balance is after the twenty twenty four financial statements were, uh, accepted as information at the last meeting. And then each year after that, the additions, the use, um, and then the subsequent balance for that year. And again, I just want to point out that the, um, the more that the operational programs and, um, projects increase, the less funds there are available to fund capital projects, um, and less money that's going into that additions column year over year. Yet, um, twenty twenty five is projected to have eighteen point four million dollars go in to restricted surplus. Uh, additions in twenty twenty six need to be at twenty point nine million. Um, additions in twenty twenty seven need to be twenty point one, just to accomplish the things in those years. Um, and even at that, it's not really accomplishing all of those things. As you can see, the Nord Egg development funded through lot sales is sitting at a, um, quite a large, uh, deficit by the end of twenty twenty seven even and into twenty twenty eight. Uh, again, there's no lot sale, um, revenue being, um, projected in those years. However, um, there, there very well could be lot sales. The biggest years that we've had in the past have been around the two million dollar mark. So that could help decrease that deficit, but it certainly isn't going to bring it to a net zero. Um, and then the, of course, twenty twenty eight is the year where, um, we see expenditures, um, sitting at a hundred and seven million. And even with a twenty six million dollar, um, projection of going into restricted surplus, restricted surplus balance sitting at a deficit of sixty one million dollars. Um, twenty six, uh, if, if that twenty six million dollars stayed at a status quo of around the twenty million dollars that council has, um, been putting into restricted surplus the last couple of years, um, that would sit at a sixty seven million dollar deficit. So definitely zero percent tax rate increases has hindered the ability to put those funds into those specific project, um, restricted surplus accounts to fund all of the projects that are on the current ten year plan, not identifying the ones that were at the last meeting. Um, and I'm sure as the years go on, there will be other projects that council deems necessary. Um, the new, new Hamlet of Caroline will need infrastructure upgrades and, um, those projects are not on the ten year capital plan currently. So, um, there's lots of projects on the ten year capital plan. So the options are to take some of them off or, um, increase revenue or, um, debenture. And again, this isn't an issue we're going to solve today, but we just want to keep that in mind as we're going through all of the, uh, items that are being, are on the agenda today. And, and although, you know, all those new projects, um, are, um, great and exciting and there needs to be a funding source and that's the bottom line here, I think. And that, um, you know, at eighteen million dollars going into restricted surplus, that's not even covering the, the project, those core infrastructure projects that are, that happen year over year, which are your asphalt overlay, your bridge reconstruction, there's, um, you know, those, those, um, fleet purchases just to support the operational pro- programs that are currently in place as a service level for Clearwater County. And in fact, I think there's some that, you know, have been pushed down the, the, the years in the ten year capital plan that do support the current service levels that are, you know, really a necessity going forward over some of the things that are, um, you know, in the next few years that are more like, um, not supporting current service levels, they're an additional service level or an additional project that are being added on to the Clearwater County's overall ten year capital plan. So, um, yeah, uh, I guess I'll pause there for any questions or any discussion that, that wants to take place, um, about the restricted surplus, although there's no decision required on this item. It's just for council or the committee's information.
Thank you, Ms. Serrano. Uh, Councilor Meloff.
Uh, thank you, Reeve. So are you wanting us to try to balance the next four years? Is that the goal here? Cause I don't, I don't know if I'm prepared to do that, but if that's what you're looking to do, then we can start that work, I guess. But is that what you're wanting? The next four years balanced?
Again, no, um, this is just to keep this in mind as you're going through the items for today's agenda to ensure that funding sources are identified for any new service levels or projects being added to the ten year capital plan. Council has depleted, you know, um, their restricted surplus over the next or will deplete their restricted surplus over the next three to four years with the projects that are on the current year ten, uh, current ten year capital plan. And it's just, um, information that needs to be kept top of mind as the, um, the items come through, um, the strategic planning sessions so that, um, these additional, uh, projects are being funded through some sort of funding source, whether that be an increase to the tax, um, revenue, um, generation or, um, other revenue sources that needs to be, um, hand in hand decision making for, um, the next, um, three to four years to ensure that, um, the priorities that council actually wants to accomplish are the ones that get accomplished, not just the ones that happen to be in front of council. This should be a strategic planning, uh, committee should be making those decisions strategically for the priorities and projects that are a priority for council. And I think I've said the word priority too many times because I think maybe the definition gets lost a little bit. But it is truly the goals that this committee and council wants to accomplish, um, to ensure that those are the things that are being accomplished.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Councilor Northcott.
Alrighty, um, I know it was, uh, yeah, there are priorities, uh, and, uh, it was identified that or said earlier that because of the zero percent tax increase that tinders the ability to fund future. Or said earlier that because of the zero percent tax increase, that tinders the ability to fund future. Projects, however, the way I see it, it was decisions that were made for the massive spending on broadband. That is now putting us in this position of maybe a sixty one million dollar deficit in four years.
Okay, any other comments or questions? If not, we're gonna continue and move on.
Thank you.
So we'll move on now to, um. I'd, I don't believe there's no except for information, correct? No, oh, yeah, there is a staff recommendation that the committee accepts a presentation as information. Okay, councillor Meloff. All those in favor? Thank you. Now moving on to item five point one, which is the twenty twenty eight Alberta Summer Games bid. And I believe. Ag and Community Services will be joining us here. Momentarily. All good. And good morning.
Good morning. Sorry for the delay. There was a preg checking this morning, so.
Got the call. Very good, very good.
Cows, yes. Technically heifers and a cow. Alright, so we are here to discuss the twenty twenty eight Alberta Summer Games bid today. The background included in the April twenty tw- April twenty second, twenty twenty five regular council meeting. Correspondence was a letter from Minister Shaw inviting municipalities to submit bids for the twenty twenty eight Alberta. Summer and winter games during the Alberta or during, during the April twenty twenty five regular council meeting. Reeve Swanson requested the, this be added to the next agenda. The town recently discussed at a meeting and this is not an official motion, this is just what I took from the meeting, so those minutes have not been approved. But the town of Rocky Mountain House passed the following motion during their May sixth, twenty twenty five meeting. Be it resolved that council direct administration to seek a partner community to prepare a letter. Of intent to host the twenty twenty eight Alberta Summer Games along with a letter to submit the, to the Alberta sport and tourism. Um, so just some information for you guys on the bid. A letter of intent is to be submitted by June thirtieth. A big committee would be struck to be, to create the bid, which would be due by August twenty ninth. Bid tours are planned for September of this year, the bid would be awarded in November, the games would be held in July of twenty twenty eight. And the event is expected to have two thousand to two thousand five hundred athletes, chaperones, coaches and officials per day. And that is with a one style shift. Um, one shift style, sorry. The community who is awarded the bid will receive an operating grant of five hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. And the community can also apply for casinos and other grants. And the twenty twenty eight Summer Games guideline is, was attached for you all to review ahead of time. So a little bit of history, in two thousand and nineteen, the Alberta Master Games, the county and town. Held this, um. Which feature approximately twelve hundred participants, hosting this event required upgrading of some facilities. The event was showcased on news stations and brought the community together with approximately six hundred volunteers and many donations from local companies. And in two thousand and three, the town of Rocky Mountain House in Clearwater County created a big committee. And submitted a bid for the two thousand and twenty six Alberta Summer Games. Unfortunately, this bid was unsuccessful and some of the reasons for that were. The track available is a shale track when the preference is synthetic material, there was a lack of throwing areas. Um, the swimming pool is a five lane pool rather than the required six lane. The spectator area at the pool allows for one hundred rather than the suggested three hundred spectators. No beach volleyball courts were available, both rugby fields needed upgrading, which. There is a bit of a change there because football is no longer a part of this, so rugby could potentially be at the football fields. And for their one ice dry, one dry ice surface was suggested to be the food center. Now, however, there is male and female lacrosse competitions, so both surfaces would be required for lacrosse. And a different area would have to be identified for the food center. That concludes the background.
Perfect, thank you. And thank you for bringing it back. Alright, so I'll open the floor to comments, suggestions, how we feel about putting in a, um, the request from. Town Rocky Mountain House to partner on a bid. Go ahead councillor Meloff.
Uh, thank you, Reeve. Well, I'm not sure it was us necessarily that was asked, I, I believe it said find a partner, not necessarily ask Clearwater County, but. Maybe I misunderstood the motion, um, that they had made. To me, it looks like we just aren't equipped to do this. The, the mandatory lengths alone in the pool is six, not the maybe we would like six. You said mandatory, so that alone makes us our pool isn't, isn't able to do it, um, don't have enough. Surfacing, don't have enough courts, like, just seems like the cost to go into putting a bid out. Which I think it'd be amazing to have a games like this, but if you're going through the cost to put a bid out when you already are missing several of the mandatory things. Seems like a waste of staff energy and staff time and. The value of time versus money doesn't seem to fit in this situation when we're not gonna get it, unfortunately.
Councillor Radcliffe.
Yes, thank you, um. I had, I had similar thoughts going through this that. Uh, sort of mentally adding up what it would cost the community to be able to have the facilities. Is millions. A reasonable handful of millions. Which would be great to have those facilities, but the question becomes how do we pay for them? So. It would be great to have, uh, would probably be a multiplier of, uh. Three or four on top of the two hundred thousand participants. Of people that would attend. Be great to have that many people. Uh, looking at our area, that's one of the, uh, the great ways to promote. Your areas is to have that many people. I'm just not sure that the community could be ready. And would ever recover the, the, the costs for the investment it would take to get to the level. Of being accepted and winning this bid, but, um. I'm open to, uh. Other perspectives on being able to accomplish it.
Councillor Gibson.
Um, I, I was going through last night and the other day and I was thinking, um. Would Sylvan Lake not be a better partner? Like, could we not partner multiple? Like Sylvan Lake has got the beach. Um, it has got an extremely good baseball field. That it is a gorgeous field, um, plus O'Cheese also has a baseball field. I don't know how that would work as partnering, but I, I do think that. I don't wanna say over our heads with it, but I, I think that this, the funds that, that would be required to, to hold this. Is. Far as I can see, not in, in my preview with the way the things are, are happening financially for us.
Councillor Radcliffe? Okay, um, being a part of the Masters Games and I was also part of the twenty twenty six bid committee with, uh, the town in regards. I believe it was councillor Hutchinson and I, uh, and traveling around, I know that we did pitch a two. Not a one day, a two, two day, uh, we were utilizing, of course, the schools, uh, within. Uh, Rocky Mountain House and Lessigville and, um, Condor, um. And I guess from my perspective, um, if you don't put a bid in, you don't get, and if you are chosen, what I, what I've learned in the past. Is that your application to CFIP grants kind of rises to the top. So it is a great opportunity to probably, if we're looking at a rocky dome or something like that effect. That being a bid and getting this bid would probably find that matching provincial funding. To do such recreation areas in our county would be huge, I know the. Uh, when we put in the twenty twenty six summer bid, we didn't concentrate as much on the Village Caroline. Because at that point in time, it was not necessarily a part of Clearwater County, but understanding too, there are facilities that could be upgraded. And it, in, um, the Village Caroline, or sorry, the Hamlet of Caroline at this time, um, so. In my opinion, uh, if there's a lot of, uh, foundation work that has already been done. We can tweak it, we can, now that we've, uh, have some more infrastructure till maybe look at and possibly upgrade. And you do put those contingencies, say, should we be, um, uh, successful in our bid. We will be applying for the CFIP grant to, for different projects in order to upgrade. That, uh, those facilities for the, the twenty twenty eight, uh, Summer Games, so. Um, that's been my background, so I'm willing to kick this can and as far as partnering with other, uh, communities. Uh, I appreciate the fact, uh, councillor Gibson, that, you know, you've thought of Sylvan Lake, um. In all honesty, I think Sylvan Lake would probably partner with the city of Red Deer, like, it's just the, the travel. That, that has to entail, so, and these kids do, um, overnight in our schools, that's where they overnight in. And then the hotels are mostly used for like parents and referees and those kind of things. Councillor Lahey.
Um, thank you, thank you Reeve Swanson and certainly building on the success of the, uh, twenty nineteen Master Games. I think we have a good track record of being able to hold a, a major event. Uh, and to bring community people to the community, I think we've seen the spin off from that continuing forward, uh. I think it makes all of our, um, proposals when we, when we look at a, a granting process. Bring new functionality to our community, I think it puts, puts another success in the background. Uh, maybe having had the experiences, there, there's some costs involved with putting together a bid, I would imagine, not only in time, but, uh. To, to make a, um, appealing bid, uh, you probably need to put some, uh. Footwork, uh, to get that, to get that out there and, and show that you have a, um. A viable, viable bid. Any idea what it might cost to, to do that is, I would assume it's a relatively minor initial cost. To do that.
Yeah, and thanks for the question and I would offer that, uh, because like, as mentioned, we did do a foundational bid back. Twenty twenty three, I think that's when the, the last time that, that, that bid went out, so. Um, I think at that time, I wanna say it cost around twenty, twenty five thousand dollars in order, cause it was a shared expense with, uh, the town of Rocky Mountain House. So being as how, uh, maybe this might be a recommendation, uh, that we, um. Reach out to our, uh, the town of Rocky Mountain House and say if this is something that they wish to pursue. That maybe we can come up with a budget and, and, uh, before we, cause that, what, as mentioned here, I think. June thirtieth is the time, so there's a little bit of time to have a discussion before we actually maybe have a. More wholesome discussion with our, with our partner and what they, what they see too. Thank you, go ahead for follow up.
And, and thank you and knowing, knowing this council has had a strong emphasis on economic development, we certainly know that these are the kind of things that. Bring that economic development, it puts a spotlight on your community, one way to really promote the community at, at a relatively. Minor cost, uh, at this point of time, uh, definitely if, uh, we were successful in a bid, I think we would have some. Ability to access, uh, additional funding and transfers of, of, uh. Funds from other levels of government to be, help us through a process like this. I, I think it's worthwhile to explore it, I don't wanna ever. Set our limits, our vision small, I think we can, we have, we have experience in this, we have a terrific. Background of volunteers that made the last one go off very well and, and being, uh, very well remembered by those that attended for sure. And I, I don't think we should set our, our goal small here.
Thank you. Councillor Meloff.
Thank you, Reeve. Um, you had mentioned that we could potentially look at applying for CFIP grants, but I thought that was one of the communities. Can, can municipalities apply for CFIP?
It is a, the bid committee.
Okay, so the big committee is the one applying for CFIP grants, then don't you have to have matching dollars for that, so if we're doing a. Multi-million dollar upgrade to a pool in order to have six lanes instead of five, is that not? It's not a committee making those decisions, that's council and. I, I just, I, I, I struggle with the potentially fifty thousand dollars. Going to a bid process, cause if it's twenty five from us and twenty five from the town, um, that may or may not actually bear fruit. The fifty thousand dollars could be used for, for many other things, cause don't we have to have all those CFIP grant applications then? And the matching dollars already in accounts by the end of June, isn't June the next CFIP run?
This, uh, I, yes, um, the next CFIP is that, is that date. But the end of the day, what we're doing is just intent to bid and then there's, we give the details. Uh, for the end of August, I believe it is, for the final, um, full, uh, bid. But we do not need to, um, there's, uh, fourteen different events, swimming doesn't necessarily need to be one of them. So we pick the events that curtail most to our communities. So there's a, a, a list of, of, uh, some mandatory, some not. So, and you go through those list of events in which suit your, like I say, your, um, community the best. So although, yes, I agree with you, it says five lanes, uh, when we did submit the last time, they were. Let's just say other communities that submitted with us, um, were more attractive in, in implementing that at the time, so. Cause they were, though, these games that are coming up in twenty twenty six are the first games post COVID. So this is, um, will be interesting to see these communities, the engagement, the uptick in, in that regard, so. Do we need to be absolutely set in stone for putting, uh, CFIP, uh, applications in for June? No. But in my experience, it, it has been later on.
Okay, I thought if you were committing in your application, um, that if you were successful, you'd do all of these things. Then you're also committing your budgets at that point, so I just, maybe I misunderstood.
Uh, councillor Lahey, then I'll go to councillor Radcliffe and Gibson.
Thank you, and I think we, we kind of have focused a little bit on the twenty twenty six. Um, Summer Games bid and why that one was not successful, quite often is because there is another applicant that. Is more successful in meeting some of the criteria or has, has all those things already on that check off list, that does not mean that. If we apply and we have a good plan around meeting some of those deficiencies or being able to find an alternative, uh, path forward. That we would not be successful in the future, but hey, just like if you're putting out a job application or, uh, a resume, um. Highlight, highlight the, the positives about your, your qualifications, you don't have to put a spotlight on what you don't have. Uh, and leave that up to the selection committee to be able to say that, you know, all, altogether as a package that. Uh, our region, our community is, is one of the best applicants. I, I don't think we should stop trying to do that and it also drives us forward that we can do these things here. And that, that investment in perhaps one aspect that we feel is, uh, most needed. It, it's a way to get that lasting, um, infrastructure development here. Uh, it may only be one event for a short period of time, but the community benefits from that for, from a long time. And it's a way to draw that spotlight to our economic development as well.
Absolutely, and a legacy infrastructure was actually covering the NSRP stands from the twen- from the Masters Games. So correct as far as legacy from that, um, councillor Radcliffe, then I'll go to councillor Gibson.
Thank you, um. I think there's probably two grant streams at least that we could, could tie into, there's the active communities. Uh, grant which is matching that, uh, can take fairly high numbers. And, uh, the, the large stream. Would you know how many, so just one intake for the large stream, the CFIP grant? One a year? And that goes to a million. And the, the smaller one has three.
I, there, I thought there was the same amount for them, but I would have to look into that and I believe the deadline is today for it, if my memory serves correctly.
The fifteenth for the small stream, but the large stream, um, I, I think is in the fall.
Okay.
So there would still be time to do that if we can identify the rest of the, the sources, um.
Okay, councillor Gibson.
Thank you Reeve Swanson for clearing that up, I thought that when we put the bid in, we had to have everything that they asked for. I didn't realize that we could then say. We can do this, this and this and this and, and go from that, so thank you very much for clearing that up, it does change things for me quite a bit, so thank you.
Alright, so any more discussion on, um, this item and what, what would be the committees? And what what would be the committee's suggestion? Councilor Northcott.
I don't know, I guess again, I'll go back to the, you know, the massive amount of money that is being spent on broadband has produced project priorities. So I see this, there's a lack of infrastructure and a lack of funds to build the infrastructure that would be required to host this event, so that's the way I see it.
All right, so what, looking for a motion as to where this committee would like to end up? Is there, are we going to possibly partner with the the town in submitting a bid? Or are we going to pass? And we need a motion to the positive, I guess, would be the in that regard? Or is there more discussion that needs clarification? Which I think today that it really is the the decision whether we feel we're going to just submit a bid or not. Yeah. Okay, Councilor Lockheed.
My my foot forward, I guess, rather than in my mouth. I shall just propose that we recommend to council that we examine a partnership with the town of Rocky Mountain House to place a bid for the twenty twenty eight Games bid.
Okay. Thank you. Any discussion on that motion? Councilor Melhoff.
Thank you, Reeve. When this comes to council, will there be more definitive or a little bit closer in like how much this is going to cost? Staff timing? Do you have capacity to actually pull this off? We're constantly told how administration does not have capacity or time to do things. This is adding another thing on the list. So when this comes to council, will all of that information be provided as well?
Ms. Graham.
So it's up to the big committee on which sports are going to be applied for and everything. So it's kind of a chicken and an egg thing where they have to make those decisions. And then it would have to be the finances and everything would be figured out after that. So I guess at the next stage, it likely would not be there. But if it were to happen and the big committee were to make the decisions, then at that stage, the the financial aspects would be brought forward.
Okay, follow up, Councilor Melhoff.
No, but even submitting a bid costs money and staff time. Do we have any idea of what that looks like? Just to submit the bid costs money. Do we have any clue?
I do not have those numbers. I can talk with the town and see if they have any numbers on that. I do know it will be less of a process than it was last time because there is the bid from last time still. So it's kind of an outline and it would be less work. But it's still, like you say, it will still cost money, it will still cost administrative time. Okay, thank you.
Councilor Radcliffe.
Yes, I was just wondering if we need to identify a funding source for that process at this point, or leave that up to council? We did number, yeah. Okay.
Go ahead, Councilor Lockheed.
Assume too that, you know, looking at, you know, the capabilities of not only our administration, but the town's administration, I I think we'd probably be looking at, I would assume, a contracted service to help guide that if if the capacity, the organization here and then the town wasn't capable. And that that would be part of the the floating the concept of how much money this bid would cost. I think that might be a practical approach to that submitting that that application.
Thank you. I would also offer the the opportunity for Ms. Graham to go back to the town and bring us back more information because, again, the end of June is the deadline, but there is still meetings until that time. And I do look on our agenda for tomorrow, the town's letter is on on our cor- in our correspondence. So perhaps maybe tomorrow or at a future council meeting. Go ahead, Ms. Graham.
I was just going to say to the contracted service, that obviously would make the fee a little bit higher. I think the plan was to do it administratively, but that would play into the fee for sure.
Councilor Radcliffe.
While I I I have concerns, I I I feel I would need to support this motion to give an opportunity to have more complete information to make a decision on. And that we should let this process proceed to some point of having that information and being able to make a wholesome decision rather than just say it it looks difficult. So I will support this at this point.
So motion on the floor that we explore the partnership opportunity for putting in a bid with the town of Rocky Mountain House. Any other comments or questions before I call the question? Seeing none, all those in favor? Those opposed? And the motion's carried. Moving on now, thank you, Ms. Graham. Moving on now to five point two, which is a Service Board Rental Equipment Recommendation. And I believe we have Ms. Vandunutik joining us. Good morning.
Good morning, everyone.
When you're ready, go ahead.
All right. Yes, this item was brought up forward at a recent Agricultural Service Board meeting held in April regarding the rental equipment. So the recommendation is that the Strategic Planning Committee consider the Agricultural Service Board recommendation that council allocate five hundred thousand dollars in the twenty twenty six restricted surplus budget for the purpose of additional rental equipment and for staff to run the program. To give a little bit of background, Clearwater County has a rental equipment program that offers equipment to assist residents with weed control, livestock equipment, a shock chlorination tank, along with a number of smaller pieces of equipment. The full list can be found attached. During the Clearwater County Agricultural Service Board meeting held on April seventeenth, the board expressed interest in expanding the rental equipment fleet currently offered to Clearwater County residents. It was discussed that offering additional equipment for rent could help young farmers along with smaller farming operations. It was noted that other municipalities offer a larger fleet of rental equipment to residents, such as the MD of Greenview, and I attached the link there for anyone to look at that was interested. Should the Strategic Planning Committee accept the ASB recommendation, administration would be would provide to council with a report after research is completed and additional background information is collected.
Thank you. Looking for discussion on this item? Pardon me, any? Do you have a a list of how often these are rented out?
Yes, I did have a list of that here somewhere.
I'm I'm just curious, what is our most, our most, I'm just curious as to what is our most used pieces of equipment?
Okay, yeah, so this is for twenty twenty four. The livestock scale was used the most, twenty four times it went out last year. And then after that, it's the field sprayer and the ATV pole type sprayers from the fleet that we currently have, obviously.
Councilor Radcliffe.
Thank you, Reeve. Is there a list of the equipment that's being suggested to be added?
Um, yes, I do have, it was, it wasn't a very specific list. It was, there was some quotes that were gathered by some of the ASB members on possible equipment that could be added. But it wasn't ever decided, you know, this specific equipment in particular to be purchased as part of this.
Okay. I I have a similar concern, I think, to what what the Reeve expressed, and and that is, you know, how successful is this program now? Like, is is, how much benefit is being provided to the agricultural community? I I guess in the really a business plan? Like, how well is this program working? Are we benefiting a significant number of farmers? And also projecting forward with this investment? How useful that would be?
For sure, okay. All right, Councilor Northcott, then I'll go to Councilor Lockheed.
All righty, I do sit on the Egg Service Board. I did only attend, it was my very first meeting, it was a very good meeting that we had there as the as the board. And what we did, just to give Councilor Radcliffe a little bit of clarity, there was there was more discussion just to request, you know, if there would be a willingness to allocate funding for the for the rental equipment rather than if there's no willingness to provide the funding for the equipment, then there was really would just create a bunch more workload on staff to create the list of equipment. So right now, really, the ask, I believe, is just for more of the funding. Right now, the the equipment is limited and there, it would offer, actually, in the Egg Service Board orientation package, the purpose of Egg Service Board is to promote agriculture. And this would would help accomplish that. There are residents that often have their noncompliance with weeds. So this would also, again, offer additional equipment to help somewhat smaller producers or smaller parcel holders properly be able to cultivate their lands and properly get it seeded where right now that equipment is quite expensive to maybe only use that equipment on a one off here and there. So to be able to purchase every single piece of equipment would be quite expensive for each and every resident of Clearwater County. So this would offer an opportunity to help, you know, improve land productivity, reduce weeds. And there would also be the assets as, like, it's, it wouldn't be an investment that would just be gone. There would be the equipment that you would still have as the asset, so. If if that, if you have any other questions, I'd be happy to to give any more clarity if needed.
Councilor Lockheed.
Thank you, and and being a member of the EASB as well, I I definitely heard the discussion around the types and kinds of equipment there. I had some concerns with what was being suggested because much of that is what I consider ground engagement material or equipment such as heavy harrows, a disc, some specialized seeding equipment. Those are kind of seasonal, very specific pieces of equipment. Somewhat difficult with with maintenance. I know that would put additional time on staff to be able to maintain that equipment because it's going to be going out in a season where it's, I mean, seeding day is today and people are going to be expecting that equipment to be functional and and going out. It's also, I think, relatively short-lived when it's used in a in a rental situation. So I know that many of these pieces that we have now are kind of season-long equipment. You know, the sprayers would be used, that livestock scales, those kind of things that have served us well up to this point. And maybe if I could get a little bit of background for for the balance of council here that or committee that some of that equipment, does it, does it require a lot of staff time to ensure it's ready to go out, maintained, and then to be able to educate people on its on its safe use and effective use? Does it take a lot of staff time to to manage what we have now?
It still is a process, for sure, between, you know, people coming in and loaning out the piece of equipment, depending on the piece. You know, some of them do require a bit more training to go over to make sure they are using it properly. And then obviously, when it comes back in, making sure everything is still in the same condition that it was when they took it out. So there is definitely the coordination there, and we're constantly trying to find ways and efficiencies to make that better. But it's definitely does still take a decent amount of time from, you know, the front end to the guys in the back going over the equipment to making sure it's ready for the next person to take out.
And maybe one one further question, too. I I know we're not really delving into the 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 equipment, sort of suggested equipment list there. But am I correct in saying that's the kind of equipment we would find on many farms within Clearwater County? Like, for instance, a disc or heavy harrows or a cedar of some kind? That's very typical for the farming business to have that kind of equipment?
Yeah, like, I speak on, you know, how many farmers in the area have this specific equipment? But I'm sure there are definitely ones that do. I mean, I wouldn't say every farm probably does, but I would think that there's definitely ones that do.
So it's not, it's not a specific piece of equipment that would be very unusual to be seen in the county? Like, you know, for like a shock chlorinator, probably not a lot of farms have a shock chlorinator or maybe even a bale scale or a livestock, you know, some specific livestock equipment like a wandrier?
Yeah, definitely, it is more normal equipment for for producers to have, for sure.
Thank you.
So would you say that the list of equipment that you've attached to this agenda item is something that is the most requested from the residents, whether you live on an acreage or a farm operating, like a operable site? Are these the most requested pieces? Or are these just, is this the? I'm I'm trying not only to determine use, and as Councilor Lockheed has suggested, right? Some of this is seasonal. So you're not going to shock chlorinate your well every year unless there's, you know, some some other issues. But I'm just, I'm trying to understand, you know, the level of service that has come to be expected and and is there more requests for for something outside what you've listed here?
Yeah, so this stuff, the current, like, the the equipment that we currently have is largely to allow producers to comply with the acts, like the Weed Act, right? So we enable producers to be able to, you know, spray their weeds so that that's possible for everybody, basically, in the county. So that's the majority of the equipment that we have besides some of the livestock side of things. We do get requests here and there for things, you know, like cedars and and that, which we we don't really have, obviously. And so, but we haven't really been, you know, tracking that super closely either as in, you know, these are the number of requests we get a year for different pieces of equipment that we don't have.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Northcott.
I'll just add a little bit more. So if you, just for instance, if you do have a an area that's heavily infested with, say, Canadian thistle or something like that, or Canada thistle, there's, yep, there's there's applicating equipment available to residents, however, you can spray that patch of Canada thistle. It's controlled now, for for now. But if it's not reseeded, then there's no proper seed bed to get that area seeded. What's going to come back? It's just going to come back to weeds. So there's no, there's no equipment right now to to get a proper seed bed and then get that area seeded so that it could be productive land. This isn't a free service. So it, there would be rental rates that would help, you know, that would that would offset the replacement costs into the future. There would also be a rental agreement. So if there were damages placed on the equipment, those individuals or those renters would then be accountable, have to repair the equipment. So it's not a free service. And I strongly think this would be a benefit for the community. And, yeah, I'll leave it at that.
Councilor Melhoff.
Thank you, Reeve. One of the big things that that when I was sitting on the Egg Board was to not compete with private industry as much as possible because, I mean, obviously, spraying and stuff is also available in some places. But you're trying to make it so they're compliant with the with the code, which disking and tilling helps with that as well. Is that, would this be then competing with private industry? Because we don't want to do that, or at least we didn't when I was on the board. We wanted to make sure that private industry had the ability to still do their, do their job privately. Would this be competing, or is that you have to figure out the structure if a strip plus is made first?
We would have to find, you know, go do some research to see what is all available currently in the community. But I do know there is some of this equipment currently available. We would have to find, you know, go do some research to see what is all available currently in the community, but I do know there is some of this equipment currently available.
Thank you. A follow-up? So in is there restricted surplus already built for Egg Services equipment? So like the fire service, we put eight hundred thousand dollars away every single year until we get to a point where we can buy a fire truck or whatever. Is there something like that built for egg equipment?
Not that I'm aware of.
No. Because it just seems like a big jump number, like eight hundred was made because they had a pre-plan of when they were buying equipment, over how many years and when they're doing it, so that every time a piece of equipment came due, the money was already sitting there. So it seems like we might need a plan, a strategic plan on what a rental program could look like so that we know over how many years you need to put someone, maybe it's a hundred thousand in restricted surplus, based on the strategic plan that the Egg Board comes up with, rather than the five hundred. I don't know. I just, I don't really see a plan. I just see an ask for money and not necessarily a plan on how to achieve that. I'm not saying no, because I I I do agree that there's lots of great ways we can deal with weeds and it's part of our job to do that. I just want to see a plan of not just five hundred thrown out there, like, let's figure out what that five hundred is for. It says staff potentially as well. I just like a better breakdown of what it means.
No, that's fair. And I was asked to bring this with no additional background information, so that's where I'm at.
Okay, for our discussion?
Perfect.
No, that's good. Um, Councillor Northcott, that'll go to Councillor Ratcliffe.
Alrighty, yeah, no. That was sort of discussion at the Egg Board meeting. If there's no willingness to provide the funding, there's no use in really doing all the background work and and doing all of that studying and and additional staff time and workload. So if there's no willingness to provide any funding, then there's, it's just a waste of time to do all that planning, so. But if there was willingness to provide funding for that program and maybe a little bit of equipment, then I think all that additional information could be brought in the future. So really, just to keep it simple, it's like if there's a desire for funding, then that information could be brought back into the you know, in the future. But if there's no willingness for providing funding, don't do the work.
Councillor Ratcliffe?
Thank you. From my perspective, the willingness to provide funding depends on the benefit to the community. And something like a cedar to me raises a concern that the the season of of use is quite short. A month, six weeks in the spring and then somewhat in the fall. How many of these cedars would we need to have to provide a reasonable equal benefit to the agriculture community? Because, you know, I'm thinking that if we have one, it could only benefit a handful of users before the season has passed. So but maybe I have the wrong perspective, but that would cause me some concern of the fleet we would need to provide a reasonable equal benefit across the agriculture community.
Councillor Northcott? Do you'd like to answer that question?
Yeah, I would like to just hopefully help Councillor Ratcliffe and provide a little bit more information here. You're you're right, it would be limited, you know, some like some of some of the pieces of equipment, for instance, there may be a land roller. A resident may only use a land roller once every seven years if they've reseeded a small pasture or something. So for every single resident of the community to have their own little land rollers or, you know, a twenty-foot or thirty-five-foot roller, it it's creates quite a financial burden on every resident of Clearwater County. So then often those pastures just get, they get neglected, they don't get reworked, they don't get reseeded, and they just get left. So they're now poorly producing properties. So if there was that ability to have a, you know, some of that more specialized, often not used on an annual basis, like things like a land roller or a brilliant cedar, that's that would be the as the as the municipality to help those residents improve their lands. Hope that helps a little bit.
Councillor Melhoff?
Thank you, Eve. I I go back to it's really tough to make a decision without a plan. But even the stuff we have now, like the equipment that we have on the rental list now, at some point needs replaced. Right? So having a restricted surplus available to replace even the equipment that we have now is is important because that will need to be changed out at some point. And then we can make sure that if there is a need for whatever it happens to be, because cedars range from something that you could, because if I looked through Greenview's thing, from something that you do with your hand to a big power drill cedar. Neither, like, we don't know what the Egg Board wants. So it makes it very difficult to say, yep, put five hundred thousand dollars into an account and they can, like, come up with a plan. Like, I agree, we need to do something, even the equipment we have needs to be replaced at some point. But it's, we don't have an idea of exactly what they want. And I I get where you're coming from, chicken or the egg. If we don't give them money to do something, then they don't want to go forth and do it because they don't think they have the support of council. But it's really hard for us to be like, Kate, here's a pot of money without a plan to put it to. So I'm trying to I'm trying to figure out a way to help with what the goal is here for the Egg Service Board while still keeping in touch with the fact that I have to defend all of the money that we put into these pots. I have to somehow defend that to my residents. So I'm I'm trying to help. I'm just trying to figure out the best way to get there.
And perhaps this is an opportunity for you know, through this discussion, and again, today, Mr. Han first introduced us, you know, it's all about the priorities and how we want service levels to go forward in the future. And I understand the need, but I I think in the past two, they've been well presented during budget as to tractor replacements, skid steer replacement, chute replacement. I think we replaced a chute three years ago, two years ago, so those were always built in, but this is the 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 other side of of this. So, Mr. Han, go ahead. Do you have your light on?
Yeah, so I think just to help with the conversation a little bit, like, is it worth a tax rate increase? And that's the the bottom line is if we're going to increase, even if we do an annual contribution, that contribution has to come from somewhere. So right now, we don't, we aren't generating enough tax revenue to contribute to all of the programs and projects that we already are currently doing. So is the new project or new service level worth a tax rate increase?
Councillor Lahy?
And I def- I definitely see this as a service level increase. We've placed a high importance on agriculture in Clearwater County. I think maybe Ms. Sirhan can remind me of how much agricultural land brings in for taxation or for assessment. I believe it would probably be even less than what's being suggested to put into restricted surplus. But we have placed a high priority on agriculture and we just want to find that right balance. I think of definitely equipment that could be beneficial to agriculture and young farmers and small farms within Clearwater County, but I think we should focus it mostly on those things that are driven by our our desire to follow the Weed Act and and give people options for weed control. The tillage part of ground or maybe testing out new specialized equipment, maybe we can leave that more to private industry. And and really, the farming is a business and it's a business decision on which equipment you have on a farm. We're not suggesting that we provide tractors or basic tillage equipment or anything here. We we expect farmers and heck, even back in the day of horses, somehow people found a way to scratch the land and to spread the seed on it. And I think here, if the intent was to bring a service level that sets us aside from other municipalities, I could see that. But I think here we've we've found options in Clearwater County to to do what we do best. And again, I just see this as an increased service level, it's fairly substantial ramp up in the equipment base that we offer for for our Egg Services line. And it it may be too much of a leap for me at this moment, but again, I'll look to the balance of the committee for what their perspective is.
Councillor Northcott? Oh, sorry, Councillor, Mr. Han, did you want to add?
Yeah, so I'll just answer Councillor Lahy's question there. So in Clearwater County for twenty twenty-four, the tax revenue generated through the farm tax levy was two hundred seventy-one thousand eight hundred twenty-two dollars. And that's not true for each municipality. That's Clearwater County has a large industrial assessment base and and has chose to keep those tax rates low and support the farming industry that way. So there is room to increase the levies in that class. And it is an assessment class, a tax rate class that's on its own, so that rate can be increased without increasing the other rates to support service level increases in that industry.
Thank you. Councillor Northcott?
Agriculture is quite necessary, as food as food is essential for life. At the beginning of the meeting, I may be mistaken, but I think that there was a discussion or mention of six hundred thousand dollars that would need to be reallocated from a restricted, as a restricted surplus. So if I heard that correct, there were six hundred thousand dollars which could be used to fund this this ask.
Mr. Han?
There is six hundred thousand dollars additional tax revenue that was generated in twenty twenty-five. And council made the decision to put it in contingency, so it is available to be reallocated. However, there was three large asks and then in in the last meeting and then the also the unknown ask for the infrastructure within the Hamlet to Caroline that are also competing for that those dollars.
Thank you. Go ahead, Councillor Northcott, then we'll go to Councillor Melhoff.
My apologies. I was I was just going to make the motion. As per staff recommendation in the agenda package.
Okay, motion on the floor. Councillor Melhoff?
Thank you, Eve. Well, this isn't a reallocation ask. This is asking for it to be in the twenty twenty-six budget, correct? Or did I read this motion wrong? Because this is a request, a request to go into the twenty twenty-six budget, right? This isn't a real allocation.
No, however, those funds are available if if those if that was the priority of this council for twenty twenty-six. Those funds could go towards funding that in twenty twenty-six instead of doing a tax rate increase for that.
Okay, sorry, I just was confused. Normally, a reallocation typically means a middle-of-the-year budget adjustment. So I just, sorry, I was I was confused. Is there an opportunity to partner with like an egg company, an egg rental company or something like that? Because sometimes the barriers are land issue, they don't have a storage, like, safe storage lot or something like that, rather than having people have to go to Eckville or or Red Deer or Innisport, like, is there an opportunity to create a partnership with an already existing rental company and then they bring their expertise, their liability insurance, their, is that is that an opportunity?
It could be a possibility. Like, I know OES, they have rental equipment available. Bernie Lubenkov, I believe, has some various pieces of equipment. So I think there's one other guy by Alhambra as well. So
Oh, so we have some locally even?
Yeah, so there is, there is possibly opportunities to do something like that or?
I I actually didn't even know some of those, the people that you're recommending. Is there an opportunity for us to just build up even a contact list? Because maybe maybe people just don't know they can get a hold of that already has this existing and then we're not competing with with other private industry. Okay, so we do have a list already?
We don't, I guess we don't really have a list that we know have on the website or, but when people call in, we're like, you know, you can call here, right?
Okay.
But we can make up something like that and add it to our website for sure.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Lahy?
And I was just going to kind of reiterate that I had saw this as a recommendation to council that they consider this in the twenty twenty-six budget, not that this money was reallocated at this time for that. It's up for the next council to decide. That's what I was thinking we were we were talking about here as well, not that this would be a a green light to start buying equipment or something like that. I think I can also see just building a little bit on what you said. Much of this equipment exists for rental already. There's hundreds of identical pieces of equipment scattered throughout Clearwater County. Maybe a a a list of of existing agricultural producers here that would be willing to share or rent their equipment might be useful to folks saying, well, like, I'm looking for a heavy harrow or I'm looking for a land roller. I'm looking for whatever. Here's contact numbers and maybe rather than Clearwater County getting into that business, we allow the community to to use the efficient capabilities they have there to really partner with their with their neighbors to get this equipment out and and benefit the community as well.
Councillor Gibson?
Since the ask is for twenty twenty-six, I agree with Councillor Melhoff that I think we should put a certain number or a certain amount of money aside every year to have a contingency fund so that when some of these pieces of equipment that we already own need to be replaced, that there is money there to replace them in the Egg Services. I I think it's very prudent of us to do that. And therefore, we have a basis for repairing and replacing.
Mr. Han?
Yeah, also, just in my experience, anytime that Clearwater County has a list and you, you know, there there, it takes a lot of time to manage and ensure that the information is up to date. And, you know, there's an expectation of of what that information is and that it's current and useful. So, you know, it's not like it it would require resources also.
Councillor Melhoff?
Hi, thank you, Eve. Councillor Lahy just said much of this equipment already exists in Clearwater County. I don't see a list of the suggested equipment being purchased, so I, that's really hard for me to say much of it exists. I don't know what the Egg Service Board wants.
Go ahead, Councillor Lyte.
Again, s- sorry for that, without that list of equipment that I've seen suggested wasn't brought forward today. So I I would be just going off memory, but I do recall things like a brilliant cedar, a a heavy disc to break up sod, heavy harrows to I'm not exactly sure how that would affect the small farmer, but I mean, it's another piece of equipment, various other more specialized pieces. That's the kind of equipment that does does exist in Clearwater County. It's typical on many small to medium farms. So anyway, that's that's my perspective to feedback from what the ASB was suggesting.
Thank you. Follow-up? Since this is a recommendation to council for the budget, I can support it. We'll look at what the budget looks like in, I believe that's end of November, beginning of December. And I would also suggest then that the Egg Service Board bring back the suggestion of what they're actually going to do with it. Otherwise, I would think that incoming council, because by then it would be a new council, would not be able to support something they don't, that isn't actually have a plan. So this is just a suggestion to council. It's something they can then put suggestions back to the Egg Service Board. In fact, I would look at a follow-up motion if this was to to go through that would suggest that very thing, throwing it back to the Egg Services Board to build what a plan could look like and why and defend it.
So as far as the motion as recommended, uh, recommendation, I will not be supporting the motion. I would support a follow-up motion to that effect to come back actually to a strategic plan in session. First, let's see the plan. Let's see what it looks like before we start allocating dollars, before we start setting up a budget. I think it's prudent to know what that plan looks like, see what the timeline for timing out some of these equipment is and what the wish list is and gives the Egg Service Board and actually the whole department an opportunity to maybe survey as people are coming in to rent, you know, what is it that you're missing? What is it that we can do? And at the end of the day, I agree with Councillor Lahy, this is more that we follow the Weed Act. I don't want to dive too much into private business or to how farmers manage their property. This is something, as long as they are within the provincial guidelines of of Uh, this is something as long as they are within the provincial guidelines of of managing their weeds, pests. I think that's where, as far as my nose dives into their private property, so that's where I would maybe. If should there be a follow up motion, I would support that one. All right, uh, Counselor Lahi, did you have any follow up?
Certainly, the the motion before us then, could could we have that read, read back, is it, is it some sort of, cause this. Is basically what I read it is just recommending that council allocate five hundred thousand dollars in the twenty twenty six. Budget or that they consider that? Uh, which which one is it, is it that they do or that they consider? Cause.
I believe the motion was made by Counselor Northcott as staff recommendation as as written, correct? Counselor Northcott?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, so it's a consider?
Yeah, the Strategic Planning Committee considers the Agricultural Service Board recommendation, council allocate. Allocate five hundred thousand dollars in the twenty twenty six restricted surplus budget for the purchase of additional rental equipment and staff to run the program.
Okay. Any other? Uh, go ahead, Counselor Meloff?
Thank you, Reeve. So now I have another question, sorry. Staff to run a program doesn't have to be in the operating budgets, then it would be different than this, or wouldn't those technically be two to? Is it right? Wouldn't staff then be in the operating, not in restricted surplus? So then this would either have to be broken up into two or defined more?
So the, the expense budget is separate from the funding source budget, so the. The expense budget would be your, the cost of the project, the restricted surplus would be how we're funding those expenditures. So the, the motion should um. Should read that um, that the money in contingency for twenty twenty five. Be considered to be allocated for the um by a council for the funding of the program in twenty twenty six. And so if, or if council wants to explore it more, maybe we don't talk about funding source until we know what the um. Costs of the program is and it would be that council considers uh additional rental equipment. Um, during a strategic planning meeting to be added to the twenty twenty six budget. And funding source to be determined at a later date.
Ms. Haight?
Hi. Good morning, thank you, Reeve Swanson. If I may just add some clarification to the staff recommendation. The staff is recommending that today the Strategic Planning Committee considers the requests from the, from the Ag Board. The discussion that was held, it most certainly, the committee has most certainly considered that request, so now. If the committee would like to pass a motion, it would be worded in such a way that the Strategic Planning Committee. Makes a recommendation to council to consider at either. Budget planning meetings or at the next, or at a future regular council meeting. But the wording in, in the committee's motion should be that the Strategic Planning Committee recommends. That council. Considers allocating funds in the twenty twenty six budget. Plan or whatever the committee has decided on, if they want more information to come back or.
Um, Ms., uh, Counselor Meloff?
Okay, thank you. So staff is changing their recommendation, cause like if this is your, if it's staff's recommendation. So now I'm confused, is this the Ag Services Board recommendation or is this staff's recommendation? Cause it's written as staff's recommendation and yet is not. Worded the way that we, staff normally recommends recommendations to the Strategic Planning Committee. Um, so is was this Ag Services Board that directed staff through this recommendation to bring it here, or is this staff's recommendation today?
The ASB's recommendation that staff's bringing forward.
Okay, so what is staff's recommendation? What is, after the Ag Services Board has given. Um, staff direction, what is now Clearwater County's staff's recommendation, not the Ag Services Board's?
Ms. Haight?
The staff recommendation is that the Strategic Planning Committee considers the Ag Board's recommendations. Which, as I mentioned before. Seen as that the committee has discussed this, they most certainly have considered the Ag Board's recommendation. And that was staff's recommendation is that the committee considers. The staff at this point didn't feel that they needed to um provide the committee with either. Uh, you know, agreement with the Ag Board or recommending something differently. It's completely in the committee's hands as to whether or not they want to accept the Ag Services Board recommendation or not. Or maybe change. Um, the idea of the Ag Board's recommendation.
Um, Counselor Ratcliffe?
Thank you, Reeve. Based on the information that the Agricultural Service Board has provided. I can't support this motion at this time. I mean, need a lot more information of how this will benefit the community.
Sir, any other information that would help you? Uh, this is more to help uh give direction to administration as to what to bring back. Should this recommendation come back for consideration, so. Um, I think it would be prudent that we have some more clarity on that, and maybe it might be after the motion. Uh, that we make, but just to, uh, if you've got anything specific, please uh share, Counselor Ratcliffe?
Thank you. Uh, yes, it it seems as though there there is more detail available as to what a. The suggested list of acquisitions would be. But, you know, I think something resembling a business plan of how this is going to be used and paid for.
Okay, Ms. Haight?
If I may have Ms. Thompson just scroll down to the bottom of this agenda item report, it says there. And I think this would answer Counselor Ratcliffe's question, should the Strategic Planning Committee accept the ASB recommendation? Administration would provide council with the report after research is completed and additional background information is collected.
Okay.
Do you have a follow up from that?
No.
Okay, Counselor Northcott?
Just add a little bit more, I guess. Um, this was intended to be quite simple and not so complicated as I think I'm here today. Uh, really, if there's no willingness for the funding, then the intent was not to give staff additional workload to. Research, uh, this is for a small few pieces of agricultural equipment for the residents of Clearwater County. Um, that don't, uh, you know, to improve maybe their lands for, for equipment that is a little bit more specialized and not used on a annual basis. In my mind, it is not a. A significant ask and there are the assets that will still remain after. So if there's, really it was meant to be quite simple today, if there's no willingness for the committee to, to, you know, for the. Five hundred thousand dollars. Then why proceed with the additional workload to do all that research, cause that does cost staff time, dollars and reports and. There's no willingness, like it's for the purchase of agricultural equipment, quite simple, for the benefit. Of some residents in Clearwater County. I I don't know how much more simple I can state that, but.
So, understanding, uh, anytime we are having an an ask for equipment, it's usually a list of an equipment breakdown with possible. Quote prices, et cetera, so that's for me, uh, just to put the the number out there, that's not, uh. Not being, doing my fiduciary duty in regards to substantiating that amount. But um I do know the the Ag Service Board through the Ag Department will from time to time bring requests for. Um, budget allocations or extra equipment, so um again, I would, if there is a need, I I would like. More information brought to a strategic planning meeting in the future versus uh council time. And if it does need to come before the twenty twenty six um budget, um, so be it, but. Having, just having the number there, I'm, I I just can't support the the number uh being requested or considered. Uh, Counselor Lahid?
I think, I think you hit the nail on the head there, this is a twenty twenty six budget decision. I think the ASB's recommendation was to consider adding this to the twenty twenty six budget for a. A a pot of money, if you would, for expanding the service level in the fleet. I can support a motion that would, would have a future council or a future budget decision around this issue, not. Necessarily allocating that money ahead of, ahead of that decision, I think. We leave a funding source till a later point of time and allow that budget deliberation uh in the fall. To to continue, I think we're not asking, I don't think we're asking for a decision on that. I hope we're not asking for a decision on that uh purchase of that fleet now, I think it's. It's a twenty twenty six budget consideration from, from my, my understanding of it.
Okay, thank you. All right, so a motion on the floor that we have the committee considered, considers the Ag Service Board recommendation? And council, oh, go ahead, um, Director Hagan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, committee members. If I can just perhaps add some additional clarification. Any sort of a decision like this is really broken into two components, it's an investment decision and it's a financing decision. Financing being the, where's the funding coming from? Um, I would suggest to put the financing decision ahead of the purchasing decision is not going to lead to a positive result. Um, I think the key question is going to be, is this committee comfortable recommending to council? The purchase of this equipment for five hundred thousand dollars? I concur with with uh Counselor Lahid that the financing decision can happen later. Um, it still needs to happen, but it can happen once the investing decision is made. Uh, what staff ultimately needs to know in order to serve council appropriately is. Do you wanna see this in the draft budget for twenty twenty six? Um, if, if the committee's not comfortable or it doesn't have enough information at this time to make that decision, then I would recommend. That ultimately staff be asked to either bring back more information or that the committee say. No at this time, so hopefully that helps to just kind of keep these things in order. To look at a funding decision now really doesn't serve the committee well in terms of, is the committee comfortable with a purchasing decision? In twenty twenty six.
Thank you for the clarity. Any other discussion on the motion? Counselor Meloff?
Uh, thank you, Reeve. Well, this is just building a restricted surplus for it, it's not actually saying go out and buy equipment, right? And restricted surpluses are moved and changed around all the time, this is just ensuring that there is a set of money, once a plan is adopted. Or created, that there's money available to actually execute that plan, um, cause here it doesn't show a list of. In twenty twenty six, go out and buy, blah, 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 blah. It's, for me, it's saying, we're gonna build a a budget similar to FIRE. Where every year, this isn't saying every year, but where every year so much money goes into a pot. Now granted, there's a full wholesome strategic plan that goes with that. They don't wanna build a strategic plan that goes with it until they see that council has any type of support, or at least that's what I'm hearing from the Ag Service Board. If council doesn't support putting money into it, they don't wanna build a plan. It's different for FIRE, cause I mean, I don't think anybody's gonna say you can't buy a fire truck well. Maybe I will, but most people won't say you can't buy a fire truck, so I think that they're just looking for some form of. Yes, council says go forth and build a plan, but I could be wrong, but if this is defeated, then the bottom of this, where it says. If this was accepted, administration would provide council with a report, if this gets defeated, will that report then just not come back? Cause maybe it's the five hundred thousand dollars that's holding people up, maybe we need to start lower than that, but. Will the report then not be generated if this is defeated? Cause. The Ag Services Board has shown that there's a need for something, maybe it's the five hundred thousand that is throwing people off. Maybe it's the seeing there's a deficit in four years that throwing people off, I don't know, but clearly, Ag Service Board has said that there's an issue.
Ms. Serhah?
Yeah, I think what the decision that needs to be made by the Strategic Planning Committee is, do you want more information on the purchase? Not whether we're gonna put money in the restricted surplus yet, it's, are you wanting more information about what? The Ag Service Board didn't have a full plan to come forward to the Strategic Planning Committee. This is just the initial ask, they weren't asking for funds being identified yet, they were asking, do you want the staff to do more research or not?
That's literally what the motion says.
Director? All right, um, so are we, any more questions for clarity? If not, would there be a motion? Go ahead, Director Hagan. Yes, sorry, my apologies. Go ahead, Director Hagan.
Thank you. Perhaps for clarity, I find the recommendation a little awkward because there's really no such thing as a restricted surplus budget. Per se. I think, I think. What I'm struggling with is. If, I mean, certainly this committee can make a recommendation to council to allocate funds either this year or next year. Into a restricted surplus account for future use, the fact of the matter is. Council has other priorities and that's how we started this meeting today. There currently isn't enough money in restricted surplus going forward, there are other recent funding decisions that have been made. Expenditure decisions to which the financing component hasn't been decided yet, so if. Council of this county was in a position where there was more than adequate resources available in terms of funding. Putting money here and there wouldn't be a question at all, the fact of the matter is. They're a scarce resource right now and the committee and ultimately council are gonna be faced with some tough decisions. In terms of how to fund priorities going forward and ultimately, the question's going to be, is this a priority? Cause that money doesn't really exist to put there when there are other things that aren't funded today.
Thank you. Um, I know for myself, yes, uh, the five hundred thousand dollars is an issue, but also the fact I'm just relooking here at. The spreadsheet that was offered in Agenda four point one and we do have what's called fleet, vehicles and equipment. There is a restricted surplus already for the whole organization, so I would assume that egg is also included in that. Um, uh, budget item and so there is um money allocated there. And in regards to um creating more line items, I think that can be, you know, within, but I mean, we do have. Restricted surplus already outlined and until um. Uh, I guess for myself, I'm not comfortable in in. In this until there's a plan that comes forward and if it's urgent and imminent, absolutely bring it forward, but if this is just uh kicking a can. Um, I I agree, we have other priorities that need more serious attention. Maybe this is something that needs to be looked at in twenty twenty seven, twenty twenty eight, not necessarily twenty twenty six. So as the staff recommendation, uh, um, as the motion is on the, on the floor, I won't be supporting. For those reasons, so anyways, uh, go ahead, Counselor Meloff?
Uh, thank you, Reeve. Um, the Fleet and Equipment Fund is built on the Fleet Master Plan, is it not? So you've literally shown what is gonna need to be replaced over the next ten years. Reverse calculated that for how much money to put away every single year in order to fund that year's requirement on the timing out and or. Maintenance requirements for our equipment, correct?
Ms. Serhah?
That's what has happened in the past, but there isn't enough money to do that with the tax revenue that's being generated currently, so. Uh, I, I'll pull it up here and see what it says at twenty twenty eight, I think it said zero. So.
Cause we put money in there every year or have been. Or since the second year I was here.
Yes, but in September of twenty twenty four, the committee and council subsequently decided. That um in order to fund broadband and the other projects in twenty twenty five, six and seven. All of those restricted surplus accounts would need to be depleted just to keep up with the service levels with no debenture. Um, financing, so broadband was a potential candidate for debenture financing, so those restricted surplus accounts could stay. Um, eh, at the levels that they were at and subsequently fund them through tax revenue. Uh, at the levels they were. and subsequently fund them through tax revenue, uh, at the levels they were being funded. However, the committee and subsequently council decided not to debenture fund, um, broadband and fund through current restricted surplus. So those restricted surpluses needed to be reallocated. And at 2028, all of those, um, restricted surplus accounts are sitting at zero.
Thank you.
Okay. So I would like to either limit discussion or we're gonna go on to, I'm gonna call the question. So go ahead, Counsel Lahid.
If we could please have the exact motion that I would be asked to vote on read out. I, I have, I have found it rather awkward and unclear and I haven't been able to keep this straight in my own mind.
Yeah.
Um, and so, yeah, with that, yeah.
Thank you for the request. Go ahead, Ms. Thompson.
Okay, thank you, Chair. Uh, motion by Counselor Northcott that the Strategic Planning Committee considers the Agricultural Service Board recommendation that council allocate $500,000 in the 2026 restricted surplus budget for the purchase of additional rental equipment and for staff to run the program.
I can ask if Counselor Northcott is okay with that motion.
Are you, Counsel, uh, request has been asked if you are still okay with that motion?
Yes, I am.
Okay. All right. So with that, I will call the question then. All those in favor? Those opposed? It's a tie vote, so therefore that motion is defeated. Counselor Melhoff?
Thank you, Reeve. Based on the background, that had to pass in order to get any information and come back. So instead, I'll make a follow-up motion, um, that to have Egg Services bring back a plan that includes public consultation to adjust the rental program to better fit the needs of the egg community.
Perhaps if you would reread, read that one more time, please. Thank you, Counsel Melhoff.
Yeah, I can reiterate it. Um, to have the Egg Service Board, Egg Services bring back a plan that includes public consultation to adjust the rental program to better fit the needs of the egg community.
Thank you. Any questions on Counsel Melhoff's motion? Go ahead, Counselor Northcott.
Um, how much is that gonna, what would be the value of that motion? How much, what would be the, the cost to Clearwater County and the staff? Um, there's no willingness, obviously, here. I know that, uh, when you go, I know that council often is advertised as a, you know, as farmers and ranchers. However, there was no willingness to provide any funding for the rental equipment. So to give more workload to staff, and then consume those resources and tax dollars to pay staff and so. There's, there's no willingness there for the funding, so I won't be supporting this motion.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Melhoff?
Well, I wouldn't say there's no, no willingness. Three of us voted in favor of doing this. Um, so just because it was defeated doesn't mean there's no willingness. Um, and I would argue that, I would think that the biggest reason, and I want to put words in the mouth of the people that voted against it, is that there was a lack of information to defend the, the value being allocated and/or the lack of information for the need for the community. Um, having the research done and, and brought back, and that's why I included public consultation, will give council the ability to make a decision based on, um, the community's needs, based on facts coming back from that, and a strategic plan on what the community requires for the actual equip, uh, equipment to be allocated. This didn't say any of that stuff either. So I wouldn't say that there wasn't a willingness at all. There's three of us that voted in favor of, of doing that very thing.
Thank you for the explanation, um, Counselor Northcott. Then I'll go to Counsel Ratcliffe.
Um, no, I think there was a extensive discussion. There was a lot of information provided. I think, uh, there was not a majority vote to, to, I think there was not a majority vote there to, to, to support the funding request by the committee. So, um, public consultation. We all sit here as committee members, and we also sit on the Egg Service Board as community members and counselors and stuff there. So there's, there's, there was quite a bit of discussion that took place there. So, uh, to, to do more unnecessary administrative tasks at this point in time, I don't, I don't feel it's necessary to continue down that, that path to do more work. If there's no dollars or no willing, like there's, there's not enough willingness there to provide the funding.
Counsel Ratcliffe?
Thank you, Reeve. Um, would this motion include the possibility of a tax increase on agricultural land to support that investment?
Uh, Counsel Melhoff?
My motion does not. Um, that is a decision of council that happens later in the year based on what the budget, um, that has been presented actually is. Um, so my motion does not. Uh, that would, yeah, that would come out of the extensive. What if the community comes out and says, we don't just need, you, you suggested the conversation at Egg Service Board, cedars, parrows, things like that. If it comes out that they also want tractors and combines, then that's completely, like, that's a completely different service level that would probably do a tax increase. But without the information of what the community and service, Egg Service Board and the community actually wants, it's very difficult for me to use a crystal ball to figure out what the tax rate's gonna be based on that.
Although I think it would be a reasonable question in the public consultation is, you know, will you accept a tax increase to have these additional benefits?
Counsel Lahid?
Thank you. Um, I, I know that, um, from experience, I know that, uh, when budget time comes this fall, that there will be a number of discussions around perhaps an increased service level or allocating funds in the budget for a question like this. I, I applaud your motion that it makes that a decision that's still on the potential recommendation list for the, of the work being done to provide for the 2026 budget. And I think that also sets the future council up for, uh, being able to see their mandate, their vision for Clearwater County and not binding them into, uh, a decision that's made today that turns away from perhaps what the community wants as an increased service level. So I will be supporting your motion.
Counsel Ratcliffe?
Um, yes, I, I think the motion outlines a responsible way to move forward and provide, uh, to justify providing a additional service to the agriculture community. So I will support it.
I won't be supporting the motion. I don't believe this is a higher priority. I think if the, the information does come back, should this motion pass, that I can be convinced otherwise. But as of today, um, I won't be supporting the motion. So I believe there's other priorities in, within our budget that we need to be looking after, so. But thank you for the motion. Um, right, so motion's on the floor. Perhaps, um, everybody clear on that motion? Or should I ask Counselor Melhoff to reread or, um, Ms. Thompson? Maybe Ms. Thompson, if you could reread that motion?
Okay, that the committee requests, requests the Agricultural Service Board provide a plan that includes public consultation and to adjust the rental plan to better meet the needs of the agricultural community.
Okay. All clear? I'll call the question. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion's carried. Thank you for that. And we're gonna take a quick 10-minute break.
Safe response route for emergency services to and from the area. Clearwater County's road surfacing and other major projects policy includes that the county's surface road inventory will only be extended through, expanded through funding partnerships such as provincial or federal grants, third-party funding, oh, this is gonna be one of those days, I can't even talk this morning, I apologize, or a local improvement tax. Funding partnerships have been proven to be an effective way to advance major projects that benefit multiple stakeholders. Clearwater County's best example of this is the grading and paving of forty-eight kilometers of the Sunchild Road. This road provided access to the Sunchild First Nations and connected two provincial highways. This project was made possible through a cost contribution from Clearwater County, the Province of Alberta, and the Government of Canada. This project commenced in two thousand nine and was completed in two thousand eleven. The estimated cost to grade and pave the O'Cheese Road is now twenty-five million. To date, Clearwater County has earmarked eight million dollars of restricted surplus to fund the county's one-third of the overall project. The Province of Alberta has also committed eight million dollars to advance this project. So with the majority of the two th- two-thirds of the funding secured, Clearwater County and the O'Cheese First Nation continue to lobby the Government of Canada for the last third of the funding for this project. So I wanted to get a little bit more into some of the history. We've talked about it since, even I believe, even when I started in two thousand nine, the O'Cheese Road was, was a topic of conversation there. So preliminary engineering typically includes information gathering, assessment, investigation, surveys, et cetera, and processing, reporting this data. Following preliminary work, the road design is approximately fifty to seventy-five percent, fifty to seventy-five percent complete, but typically minimal discussions have been had with, had with landowners and utility owners. That's basically to the extent that we are now. For detailed design to occur, there often needs to be commitment to construct or allow for right-of-way acquisition, utility coordination, environmental applications to be successful and completed. Without anticipated construction dates, environmental applications are incomplete, as well as landowner and utility owners are often unwilling to sign off on agreements or move utilities. A little bit more in the background, so one can take us all the way back to two thousand fourteen. Clearwater County retained WSP to complete extensive preliminary work on the O'Cheese Road. This includes surveying, daylighting pipelines, design drafting, and the development of a pavement design report and construction estimates. So the work costs approximately ninety-four thousand dollars, and the grading and the base pave estimate for that in two thousand twenty-fourteen was about sixteen point seven kilometers. So as with this project, we talk about it for a while and then it comes back. So about two thousand sixteen, we retained WSP to revise the estimates, and it actually, just due to the, to the usually diesel fuel pricing, cost of oil pricing there, it actually went down to about sixty million dollars there about two years later, which isn't uncommon for large grading or paving projects to have significant fluctuation as it, as it basically rides the wave of oil prices. And two thousand twenty-one, the county retained WSP to resurvey the road, locate additional pipelines in the fiber utilities, because they had since had a fiber line headed up, all the way up to the O'Cheese, complete a wetland field assessment, a qualified aquatic environmental specialist assessment report, it's a mouthful, we call it a quase from now on, mapping and updates. We, they mapped and updated the construction estimate, so the work was about fifty-two, fifty-two thousand dollars, and the estimate was now up to about nineteen million dollars. So that was two thousand twenty-one. So in two thousand twenty-four, the county retained WCE Engineering to update the grading and base pave estimate, and there is a bridge file that's on that road, and over the course of its life, it looks like it's gonna need to be replaced, certainly before you do something as major as a, as a paving project over top of it. So that's why the estimate is now twenty-five million dollars in two thousand twenty-four. So to date, this work combined with the lobby effort, we've been successful in securing an additional eight million dollars from the provincial government, which we're very thankful for. So there is risk involved in moving into the detailed design stage without having an approved project, because as of today, it is not approved, and, or assurance at least that the, the funding would be on its way. You know, a letter from, from the feds that says that, you know, they're committed to that dollars, today we do not have that. So I'm gonna outline some of the risks involved and the costs. So the estimate to get to basically have a tender document in our hands is about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We've already, of course, set our two thousand twenty-five budget, and so this would require a budget adjustment from that restricted surplus. Fortunately, without that third funding partner in place, the financial burden for that hundred and fifty thousand dollars would be borne on the, the two active funding participants, so it would be the province and, and Clearwater County. Environmental approvals, wetland and water course or environmental approvals, they do have an expiration, expiration date. So if the approvals expire, this work would need to be completed again, which we've already done once for some of them. Loss of investment, each time the project is designed and not constructing, it's not constructed, it's inevitable that some of the work would have to be completed again in order for us to move forward in the future. Council commitment, you know, it's no, no secret that it's a municipal election here in October of two thousand twenty-five. This work, even if we commence now, it wouldn't be completed in, well into two thousand twenty-six. So one idea would be let the, have the new council determine where this project is on the priority list. So then I've provided a detailed list of, you know, if, if council does wanna move forward with the additional engineering, it can be done, we, we hire third-party engineering services, they could commence, it's been estimated between eight to ten months in order to get us to, they say, having basically a tender document in our hands with a series of assessments and wetland applications that would have to be completed. So I'm gonna go back to the recommendation now. The recommendation that's been provided in the, in the item itself is that it accepts the O'Cheese Base Pave Project Update as information. That's one option. The other option is that the Strategic Planning Committee recommend to council to move forward with the detailed design of the O'Cheese Base Pave Project, that's, that's always there. Or that, you know, there's, there's multiple recommendations that could come with that. So I think I'll turn it back to the chair there and answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Director Hanson, and I can confirm as a lobby effort, I have shared with the balance of council or this committee that, you know, once the federal government has announced their cabinet positions, which is expected tomorrow afternoon, we will have a better direction on who to lobby at that third, for that third partner. And I think that's prudent. I know in speaking with Minister Adreshan, each time he is, he's kind of requested that we, we wait for that and for that announcement to come, and then knowing for, going forward with advocating again for that third partner for, because I do, the way that, the letter that I understand from the provinces, that partnership is contingent on federal monies coming in. But as per policy is mentioned many times too, we'll accept anyone as a third partner as well. So not saying that this is not an important project, it is, but I think we need to kick the, those doors down. But, Council Melhoff.
Thank you, Reeve. I would suggest that once they do have the announced cabinet and we set up those meetings, that we also try to set up meetings with shadow cabinet as well. Our, our colleagues in, in opposition, I think, could be very helpful on the continued lobby efforts. So when we set up meetings with government, we should set them up with shadow as well, with the opposition. Are the studies needed in order to apply for the grants? There was a, a, a meeting, I believe it was the meeting we had with, with the nation. They said that it has to be fully shovel-ready in order to apply for some of the grants. Have we looked into that, is that accurate, or are we at a point where we have enough information already to apply for some of these grants? I just don't want us to miss some of those granting opportunities. It was suggested that we might not be able to if we don't do this part.
Director Rains.
So I guess history would, would show that we were successful in securing eight million dollars from the province with the amount of information that we have today. It wasn't a specific grant that we applied for that had a, a series of set-out criteria. Basically, the province was well aware of the funding shortfall that this project had. We provided the preliminary engineering drawings and the, all the information we had that eight traffic counts, for example, for example, letters from council, letters from concerned citizens, as well as the nations, and we were successful in securing that eight million dollars. So we haven't heard of additional information required from the feds. They've never asked us for additional information to, to fund this as, as a decision-making tool. So in, in our estimation, that this work would not be required to apply for a grant.
Council Rockliff.
Thank you, Reeve. I have a number of questions. How much have we spent to date? Maybe how much will we have spent if we do this, this last final work to prepare for a issue with tender in round numbers?
Yep, so outline that in the agenda. In four, in two thousand fourteen, we spent ninety-four thousand dollars on preliminary design. We spent fifty-two thousand dollars again, doing it again in two thousand twenty-one. And that information's not lost, but we, we need a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to continue through detailed design.
So we would have three hundred thousand plus invested?
That's correct.
Okay, all right. Do we have any traffic counts that show the current users on that road?
Yeah, we have a, I provided a detailed report historically there, we didn't bring it today. I, I can provide you that what the two thousand twenty-four counts are. So considerably high, actually, on the west end in two thousand twenty-four. So this count was taken in late September, about six hundred and seventy-one vehicles a day. That's, that's traffic going east and west at that single point. That's directly west of the Buster Creek Road, so I'm gonna, we'll call it the southeast end. At the northwest end, it was approximately four hundred and thirteen vehicles a day. There again, that's, that's east and west traffic passing combined at the single point. So you'd have, let's, for example, two hundred vehicles going east at that point, two hundred vehicles going west, and that's why you'd have that four hundred vehicle count at that point. Another fun fact, the percentage of trucks at those two points, it's also something that we measure when we do traffic counts. So it was about, I'm gonna say nineteen percent at the east end and approximately fifteen percent at the west end. So there is, normally that road is about five hundred vehicles a day, or four, four hundred and fifty to five hundred vehicles a day, pretty much even from the west end, the east end. It seems like a little bit of an anomaly there to have six hundred and seventy-one at the west end. There again, we've been monitoring the traffic on that for, for as long as I've been here, and it's consistently up in that five hundred vehicles a day.
So would it be reasonable to say that two-thirds of the traffic is from the nation?
That is based on those, the traffic data. We, there again, it's, it's non, the, the traffic counters that we put up, that's, that's a pretty good indicator as, when we put those, that's why we put one on each end to determine how much is actually traveling through versus how much is actually being, going to well sites or, or industry along the road, for example.
Okay. What, what do we currently spend maintaining that road?
Oh, this is, no, that's, that's fine, I, I know, oh, there's, look at the guy right there.
Director Van Kess, welcome.
So typically, it's at the very least one hundred thousand per year, if not more, that's on the low end. It's more around, I'd probably say, on the high, you know, depending on the year and how much rain and so on, and, and again, traffic count, et cetera. But yeah, probably about one forty-five, hundred and forty-five thousand a year takes for us to maintain that road. And that's having a grader on there, assigned solely to that road, twenty-four, seven, basically. So he's on there at least four days a week on that, on that road.
What would the, do we have projected, if, if that road is paved, do we have projected numbers for what that would typically cost to maintain? You know, considering that, you know, it has a fifteen-year life typically?
Yeah, so the, I'm gonna go with Eric's little quip here, fun fact. Most people think that it's much cheaper to maintain a surface road than it is a gravel road, but actually it isn't. And the last numbers we ran, again, I'm just giving you ballpark, rounded up and that sort of thing, is typically a gravel road takes about five thousand dollar, five thousand dollars per kilometer to maintain, whereas a surface road is approximately thirteen to fourteen thousand per kilometer to maintain.
Thank you.
Council Miller.
Thank you, Reeve. What's the typical end of life of a gravel road? Like, we do gravel road rehab all over the, all over the county. So fifteen years for like a surface overlay, what's the number for like a gravel road of when it has to be potentially rebuilt?
Yeah, so we've, we've stretched out our, our surface roads to twenty years on our, our, our rotational overlay cycle based on typical use. The Sunchild Road, it was actually constructed to a band-free standard. It was, it had to be extensively rehabilitated after ten years. So it really is based off of traffic volume and, and typical usage. So we would, we still would strive and, and want to conservatively say that we can get twenty years of that road. A gravel road, it's almost indefinite with good maintenance. If we don't have a, a life cycle, we know that it requires after, you know, after a good rehabilitation, you could basically maintain its shape and within, for the next twenty years. There again, based on typical use. But the, the amount of, for a shoulder pull has been much less extensive. And that's, that is actually included in the five thousand kilometers per year in the maintenance of a gravel road compared to the fifteen. I'm gonna say with the price of asphalt and oil, that fifteen might be an older number now, it's probably scratching closer to twenty thousand dollars per kilometer per year. But that's, that's also including an overlay in its lifecycle. But that's, that's also including an overlay in its life cycle. And then we've also put in, in that three thousand a year, when we base it over all of our kilometers over the county, that there would be a rehabilitation of that, of that, or a shoulder pull of that within the next twenty-five or thirty years or et cetera. But it's still, as a good rule of thumb, asphalt on average is three times more expensive to maintain than a gravel road. That's, really it comes down to a level of service that, that we provide. It's a much higher level of service.
Follow-up? Yep. So if we do, I, I believe if I look back at my binders, roughly give or take five million dollars a year of gravel road rehab. When was the last time the OCH's road was rehabbed?
Within the last six years, five years, we have done, and that's, was actually, I'm gonna say within maybe three to every five years, we have to go in there. And there's upwards of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I believe, for the rehabilitation that we put into the critical sections of that road. There again, it's seventeen kilometers. Some areas blow out worse than others, you know, that need to be actually put back into shape, reditched and then as well as prepped, and then gravel the whole thing. So the, you know, Mr. Magnus has done well to kind of, if you're on a typical year, between a hundred and fifty thousand, two hundred thousand dollars a year in maintenance. But then that wouldn't include the, the cost of doing a rehabilitation on that. And it's typically five years, given the amount of traffic that that road does see.
Sorry, one, one more if I may Reeve. So when you say that it's, you, you were saying thirteen to fourteen thousand per kilometer, and then you said around, potentially around twenty per kilometer for pavement. If it's not, and that's including the overlay every fifty, well, twenty years. So did we put that money then into the paving restricted fund? So that we, it's there and available when the time comes? Like is that why we have that number figured out per kilometer? So that per kilometer, we're putting that much money away? So much goes to your snow plows and staff, et cetera, to run the snow plows and the salt, et cetera, and so much goes into the future base pave? Like is that why we have that figured out?
Yeah, it used to be that we actually had a paving reserve and the reserve was actually for new construction. Within the last couple of years, what we do is we build a ten-year capital plan, which basically outlines that, you know, we try to overlay between twenty-two to twenty-five kilometers per year. We, so we create that in a ten-year plan. And then we provide that to finance to say that, that every year we put that amount into that, into fund that capital purchase. But knowing that it's, it's ongoing perpetuity.
Alright, thank you.
Ms. Sarah?
Yeah, and again, because of the reallocation in September of twenty twenty-four, those really got rearranged. And there's no longer any, what I would call year-over-year dollars going away to fund our, our projects because of council's decision to prioritize other projects over the standard services.
Counsel Lawrie, then I'll go to Counsel Gibson.
Just, just so it's clear in my mind, you quoted a couple of numbers around costs to maintain the roads. I believe I heard five thousand dollars for a gravel road. And does that include the cost of the gravel on that as well? Like amortizing the, the use of gravel? And, and it's probably not consistent on every road. It's, it's kind of an average over the whole municipality?
Yep, you're correct. You've did it succinctly. That's correct.
And then the asphalt side kind of quoted a fourteen thousand dollar, but does that actually amortize the, the surf, the resurfacing as well at that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Gibson?
Um, thank you. You had mentioned about paving. Now, right now there's a, a grader that's designated to that road. So therefore, if it's paved, we have to buy a plow truck, do we not? So that's an added expense on top of that, because of course you can't for maintenance. So then, will that plow truck then be only on that road? Or is that plow truck then going to be allocated to other places?
Director Magnus?
Excellent question, Counsel Gibson. Yes, so we're currently running the numbers. And as always, we try to find efficiencies, okay, and be good stewards to our ratepayers. So we're looking at a number of options in regards to keeping the costs down in terms of cap, purchase of capital equipment and in the maintenance of that road. So first off, yes, that plow truck is dedicated solely to that road. It'll be Buster Creek and OCH's. That's it for that road. Right now, it looks like we would have to purchase another plow truck. Although we're still working on fiddling, seeing if we can work on some other things in terms of, of, of replacing equipment in such a way that we might bring on a triaxle. And that way it has a larger box in regards to maintaining that road and still keep it to, to our current seven beats. And so, long, short of it, we hope for the best, plan for the worst. But right now does sort of look at, like bringing on another plow truck, yes, into the inventory in regards to equipment and making another beat essentially.
Counsel Rockliff?
Thank you. You mentioned a bridge. Is there a, a bridge on, a, a county bridge that would need to be upgraded, replaced?
Yeah, it's a bridge file culvert. It's just a, a large diameter culvert there that's, that would be coming when you're doing the cost benefit there, be more equitable to do it and including it into the, into the grading project. And having that, the, the life of that bridge file extended through, for the next fifty to seventy-five years. So as I said, it's looking, even ten years ago, it wasn't really that high of a priority when we first started talking about it. But adding ten more years of, of deterioration and as well as the, the analysis that's been done on that bridge file, it's more cost-effective to do it and including in the grading project.
Yes. Oh, yeah, that, that makes sense. So that's not a significant amount as a, as a culvert compared to a bridge?
Well, actually, they're comparable. This one, I believe, is estimated a million and a half, right? It's, we, we do a, a cost benefit analysis. It, it's an existing bridge file culvert and that's what we intend on replacing it with.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Counsel Lawrie?
Thank you. I guess my question would be kind of more of an operational question. But bringing on an additional plow truck, is there additional infrastructure necessary to support that plow truck? Such as shop space or a salt storage shed at the, at the terminus of that, that road? Is that gonna be a future consideration as well? Knowing that that is, it's, there's no loop there. That's kind of drive there, drive back for, for salt. Just, just wondered if there's some additional costs we haven't quite considered yet either.
Yeah, I, we think we've had this conversation a few times there with the committee and council, as recently as, as budget twenty twenty-five. We are definitely running out of heated storage space for our, our winter fleet and, and equipment. So we still have in the budget for twenty twenty-six, as per the, the decision that was made in twenty-five is to have a, a heated storage to be constructed in twenty twenty-six. We are good for our salt sand storage facility. Those, those facilities have been modernized and are undercover in strategic locations. We have, of course, one up on the north quarter. We have one down in Caroline. There's, there has been discussions with operations, you know, would, would like to have more strategic, another strategically located salt storage facility. But right now, we're, we're good for, for salt storage, but we are definitely going to be shy and needing additional space, particularly if we get another truck. And the inefficiencies that are created even today, having those plow trucks parked over top for mechanics. So that'll be something that we bring, with that plan in mind, we'll be bringing that back in the fall to discuss with, with the new council about, you know, setting the priorities for twenty twenty-six.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Northcott?
Alrighty, well, I guess the way I see this topic is really the number one priority on this topic at hand here is to find a, a commitment from a third-party funding source, really is the number one my priority, the way I see it. Historically, you can see, I, I understand that there's information that is needed to proceed with projects. However, you can see that over the years, there are significant dollars that get spent, you know, ninety-four thousand, fifty-two thousand. Now another request for, you know, possibly another hundred and fifty thousand. But really, at the end of the day, the funding is really the priority. We need that third-party funding source. And I'm only guessing that there would be many benefits for just safety and environmental benefits. I don't know what the historical accidents have been on that road, but I'm even sure with the, if there's a tanker rolled over, there's a significant amount of cost that would be associated with that for environmental cleanups, the loss of life, the dispatch of emergency services. And there would even be a increased fuel economy, I'm sure, for many people that, on a paved surface rather than gravel. So there are many benefits, but really the number one priority is a third-party funding source.
Thank you. So there is a staff recommendation that we, the committee accepts the OCH's road base pave project update for as information. If there's any and no other, other questions, we'll look for the motion. Counsel Rockliff?
I had one last question that is probably unfair to ask, but maybe someone has some information on this. There was a suggestion that the nation buy the road. How difficult would it be for them to acquire land or lease land to build their own road? Yes, that's unfair. Sorry.
I, I'm going to flip that back on to the group to say, you know, the willingness, you know, if, if, council as a whole, like, and that'd be totally speculative, because that's never even been a subject that we've ever researched that if, you know, to, for it not to be our road. Today it is our road. Now, if council or Strategic Planning Committee wishes it for, to, to look at other options of ownership or what that would look like, then that would be, have to be direction from that group to us. And we would research it to the extent of what's required. But if, if it's not a priority, I would love to part that, that question.
Yeah, I think too, go ahead.
No, it's just that we have a limited number of users on that road that would not justify anything beyond its current gravel condition. That's why I guess it's a difficult decision and an issue to try and find a third funding partner.
Yeah, I, I think, based on the traffic volume, I think it is a, it is a high priority. And this, this council's always supported the idea of that road being paved and being a partner on that road. As, you know, even though it is a Clearwater County road infrastructure, recognizing the location and its utilization, that's why the group has always been so adamant that a, that a three-party partnership was what's required in order to move this forward. And, you know, and then I guess through the efforts of this council and historic councils there, we've been successful in, in locking up sixteen million dollars. And I believe, you know, with this, with the new federal government, I hope, I know Counsel Swanson, Reeve Swanson's already identified, you know, the, the steps that are gonna be taken to try to lobby to get that last part of the funding. And with a fresh perspective in the, in the, for the federal seats, hopefully we are successful soon.
Thank you. In that case, I would make a motion that the Strategic Planning Committee accept the OCH's road update for information.
Thank you for the motion. Counsel Melhoff, then Counsel Lawrie?
Thank you Reeve. I just was gonna confirm that there wasn't a motion needed to direct administration to set up the meetings with the federal government. Do you need, do you need direction for that or are we good?
I believe though, the last conversation with Minister Dreschen, Minister Dreschen was setting that up because he wanted to attend that and help advocate for that. And I think as per BL eighteen, that is probably the route we should be doing. So I think we have put out a letter requesting.
That's why I didn't know we needed a motion to have Dreschen reach out to them and just didn't know if it was a whole thing, so.
Counsel Lawrie?
I was just going to share that in, in my belief, Clearwater County has had a longstanding commitment to be a strong partner in this road, not only in the construction of this road, but also in the ongoing maintenance and resurfacing of that road and the commitment to public safety that that brings. That's a long, long-term commitment. And I, I'm somewhat puzzled by the reluctance of the federal government to support this project when they hold a true level of responsibility for the safety of, of that community as well. So we hope that we're successful in those advocacy efforts as an entire community as we move forward.
Alright, motion on the floor to accept the project update for information. I'll call a question. All those in favor? And that motion's carried. Thank you. Moving on now to six point two, Clearwater County South Facility Update.
Alright, so, yeah, we haven't talked about Caroline in a while. Some exciting things going on in Caroline. We've, of course, we had a, the disruption with the water line break there. Staff got it fixed there on Saturday. We've done some sewer line flushing as well as cammering down there. That didn't go as well as expected. We had some, some issues with that. But hopefully, you know, our, our goal is to reconfirm some of the existing data that the village had, you know, and getting more updated data with, with, through this cammering and to assess the condition of the existing infrastructure. So we can make a better plan and make recommendations to, to this group there this year and into the future about how we should stage upgrades as well as the additional development. Another good news story was that we were given the extension from Albert Environment for the operation of the lagoon system. So I appreciate the, the efforts from the Reeve, as well as the cooperation of the environment staff there. You know, recognizing, you know, Clearwater County being new to the show there when it comes to, to Caroline's infrastructure, given us time to evaluate and come up with a, with a good long-term plan for that, for that system down there. So we're very thankful for that. So yeah, that's great. Get right into the Clearwater County South Facility update. We're gonna come up with a better name for that structure soon. It's kind of leaning toward possibly a Caroline Public Services Building, you know, if we can use it as a, as a term moving forward. I know we were reluctant there historically, but I think it's about time that we, we give it a real name. So during the October twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four Strategic Planning Committee meeting, motion by Counsel Melhoff that the, that the, the committee directs administration to investigate options for fire service deployment, a facility study in the southern portion of Clearwater County and bring back options in the first quarter of twenty twenty-five. So that was at the committee level. It was discussed more in depth at budget to try to get some ideas and some more, I guess, substance to what the ask was. And we have started on some of this work for the facility as well as the infrastructure, because they'd really go hand-in-hand. Because knowing that any facility would likely want to be hooked into municipal infrastructure, it needs to be in a location that, that makes sense, that is, ability to as a support it and possibly even be a catalyst for additional development. So the scope of this south facility was discussed during twenty twenty-five budget deliberations and included fifty thousand dollars in the Public Works Infrastructure, Infrastructure Operations Budget. And happy to provide a summary of some of the work that's been completed. So we have the existing facility, Station Thirty. Type, it's a steel building, concrete slab, galvanized metal roof and walls. Interiors, metal framing, drywall, paneling. It's a forced air furnace. Total square footage about six thousand two hundred and forty square feet, constructed in nineteen eighty-six. So it's still a, it's a pre-engined building. It's not really that old. But it's, I would say it's undersized for the amount of service that, that it, it provides. With that, in that building, we have a front-line pumper, a water tender, a brush truck and a truck and trailer with a side-by-side. So I provided a couple of pictures for that facility, kind of showing the, the meeting room, the exterior. You see, we have three bay doors in the front and I believe, yeah, one in the, in, sorry, three, three bay doors in the back and only one in the front. So it really limits the ability to, to move equipment in and out of there. Like I say, it is still a good structure in itself. We have the, we have the hazardous materials report there that any hazardous materials that need to be mitigated have been or have been in a plan to be mitigated. It's being the age of the building there. Hazardous materials that need to be mitigated um have been or and and plan to be mitigated. It's being the age of the building there, it wasn't that bad. So upon review of potential development sites for a new um public services building, I'm gonna use that term now from now on. Within the Hamlet Carolina, it was determined that the new industrial area area located in the east part of the Hamlet was the most desirable. I don't think that's been a secret for this group. We were very familiar with Caroline and and the development potential. The the southeast rec grounds, you know, is designed, that's the other potential location, but that really is. Is slotted for either recreation or other development. We didn't, and being so far away from the from the main uh the main highway for response time. We didn't feel that was prudent to even bring as an option. And the benefit of the industrial commercial area is that it's county owned. So some of the pros, most lots are currently vacant and owned by the county. They're upgraded illuminated intersection on the highway fifty four, so that was part of our development. Criteria is that we had to upgrade and illuminate the intersection there on highway fifty four into that development with capacity to support uh future development. Uh, the lots are appropriately sized to facilitate a modernized facility, you know, the average between the the commercial lots are about an acre and a half, but the. The industrial lots are about three acres. Uh, the access road and the approaches are paved to a band free standard, so that's already taken care of. Uh, we've already then uh graded the sites. With and also have power and natural gas to on property line, to property line. Stormwater management plan's already in place, so that's another huge cost for a lot of these developments is the the development of a of a storm plan there. We'll be talking about that a little bit more there in the Nordic, the Nordic world here shortly. And then providing municipal services in that area would would definitely, in our estimation, promote additional growth, you know, there's a. Return on investment on those uh municipal facilities, um that's been. You know, we haven't sold any of those commercial lots because, you know, the setback of having or the drawback of of not having any municipal services there. So um we believe that adding municipal services up there would make it definitely more um saleable. Repeat, a lot of appeal to that. Um, so the biggest con is that there's no currently no municipal water in the area. And the capital costs associated with that. So we have done, the Village of Caroline has combined actually with the county, we did some, there was some preliminary work done on servicing the industrial area. The servicing studies attached, there's some high level estimates that were provided in the three million dollar range. It also included looping the water lines. A lot of this was a combination of of addressing some of the inefficiencies in Caroline's existing system as well as getting services up there. So we're working with our current, our current civil engineering team coming up with with better options. We're we're really at the uh beginning stage. We need to. First of all, there again, we just finished cammering the existing lines, uh so we can know what the priorities for that likely would be. The main trunk lines that would service this area or seem to be in the worst shape as well, so they would likely be the highest priority. Yeah, so when we're, I'm kind of going into a little bit of extra detail on some of the servicing options that we had for the. Industrial and the commercial area. Um, so just to explain it briefly, there was two options that were provided from a high level. One was a individual lift station and a grinder system on each lot that would elevate the septic into a. Into then a gravity line or a a low pressure system in order to get the effluent into the municipal system. The other is to construct a a gravity system that goes to a main uh a large lift station, a municipal lift station. And then then it would be funneled back into the uh village system, or sorry, the the Hamlet system. I'm gonna apologize. So ultimately, it's a it's a cost difference, but you are certainly um. You lose the ability for high water volume use users such as a car wash or a seed cleaning plant, et cetera, something that uses a high volume of water. It's less efficient than if it was a municipal unless it was went to a lift station. So. We are still evaluating all these options. I just wanted to make council well aware that we are looking at some different servicing options for the area. It's not a large development, even at the like the total area is a hundred and twelve acres, you know, normally municipal lift stations are based on a quarter section. If everything funnels to a lift station, then it gets pushed off. Um, this is a smaller development, so it's something that we'll be. Be bringing back in the future when we actually start allocating dollars for upgrading water sewer into this area, which option we're we're more. Likely to pursue. But there again, it's, we have to really be forward thinking in our in our estimations of. To not limiting future development. So that's the municipal water wastewater, again, it's actively being researched and recommendations are to come. Really, I go into the building design. Um, we haven't had any discussion with council yet. This is only based off conversations that we've had with our emergency services personnel. Christine and and John, as well as our our existing familiarity with building public services buildings since we've already built three. So staff reached out to Altus Group, that was the project management firm that we utilized for Condor and Lesteville. They do a great job on creating uh requests for proposals to to get, and we've had some very competitive pricing over the years there. And very few change orders because those are really uh a killer when it comes to the constructing. These sixteen thousand square foot uh buildings is is multiple change orders. It can take your timeline and your budgets and and put them right out of whack, so um good project management is. And it's something that that we don't have in house, but we feel it's something that we'd want to um engage with. So we've engaged them at the preliminary stage now. We we have a proposal there which I've attached. To assist us with this concept design. Uh, we know we've we've talked to emergency services, they're looking for approximately four bays with a hose tower. Similar amenities to what the other public services buildings have for for space for admin. But we haven't had that any of those conversations with council to see, you know, what do you guys envision there for for the future of this building? So yeah, high level summary of the building is a four bay building, um comes with three apparatus bays, one half wash bay and one half ambulance bay. It's no secret that the the ambulance um bay that they currently have is is small. And there's been interest in co-locating if there if the county were to move forward or something like this, so we've just put it in the design and and. It's up to the group whether that stays. Um, gear room, hose drying tower, that's. It's been kind of communicated as it may be a miss on some of the other buildings that it wasn't a priority for the last operational group, but they they see it as a benefit for. For this one. Um, yeah, and then administration area will be similar to Lesteville, Nordic. But then we have to really finalize and and we're just to say coming up with a concept plan now through discussion and be bringing that back for a future meeting for. For more discussion. Um, so a couple of pictures there, I wanted to uh, you know, kind of just as uh references, that one is actually in Soyuz. It's a four bay building with a with a hose tower. It's a beautiful looking building. And then, of course, our Condor Public Services Building there, we can't take a picture of somebody else's hall without having our beautiful buildings up there. You know, that's just showing a five bay building there. That was done by Eagle Builders, they did a great job for us. So yeah, moving on to funding and timeline, uh there comes a little bit of the bad news. So the twenty twenty five budget reflects fifty thousand dollars for the development of the concept, design and the servicing options. The fire facility's restricted surplus has a projected balance of six hundred thousand dollars at the end of twenty twenty five. Detailed design construction could potentially commence in twenty twenty six pending additional funding. Availability and prioritization. Of course, we have to take this building and put it up against all the other things that we need to 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 fund. From a historical expense perspective, I decided I wanted to include this in there, so both Condor and Lesteville were approximately four million, five hundred thousand dollars each. Little bit of apples to oranges, uh Condor is sitting on eight acres, uh we just, uh we, so we purchased the the eight acre parcel. Developed the five bay building, uh Lesteville, we built a three bay building, but we purchased twenty seven acres and also constructed a large. Fire pond, so basically what we saved on the building, we spent on the the site development. But so very comparable in costs of what we spent so far, but four and a half million dollars is is what we spent on each one of those. So, next steps, moving forward, staff will continue to investigate options for municipal services for the industrial commercial area. Uh, next steps include engaging Altus Group to commence the concept design for the for the building. Presentation of the concept, design, project estimates will be brought forward to a committee, uh brought forward to the committee uh during a fall strategic planning. Meeting. So that is the update for the newly named Condor Public Services Building, Caroline Public Services Building, sorry. And the recommendation is that the committee accept as information.
Thank you. Council Meloff?
Thank you, Reeve. I have several questions. Um, if we do any extensions. And or change the sanitary system at all, are we then, do we then lose the um extension that we got, i.e. nobody moves, nobody gets hurt? We'll give you your extension as long as you don't touch it type of a situation, and then the minute we either extend the services or change the services, or we, do we then not? Do we then lose the compliance con um extension that we were given? And then are forced to upgrade an entire sewer system and not just do the two point eight million, I believe, was. What was suggested for servicing of the industrial lots?
So there hasn't been any conversations with uh Albert Environment about modifying the approval from what we have today, other than it's that we that it's been extended. That we have to have a pre-design to them by the end of twenty twenty six. Um, we really would like to. That needs to be our highest priority in in Caroline is to get a pre-design report on the on a new system. So I think we've already passed the point of if you touch it, then you have to upgrade it. We already have to upgrade it. That's been identified. That that question was asked and answered, I think, about twenty seventeen, and they were told that they you need to develop, you have ten years to build a plan. And so that the original um completion date was twenty twenty seven with the with the actual the pre-design report was due this summer. So anything that we do in there is going to require these upgrades and even without doing anything requires upgrades, so.
supplementary. So you're suggesting potentially four bays based on um what the fire services and EMS have have asked for. We're continually told we're out of heated storage uh in the community. I think that building just four bays would be. Um, a disservice to the value of building buildings upfront that are larger and meet more needs and future needs. So I would suggest right away that we need to build more heated storage that goes along with this. Um, it's cheaper to do it. In the beginning than to go back and try to add more bays on to a building. Um, so if we're doing it, that would be my 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 first suggestion. And I would actually argue that we could use the funding that's been allocated for twenty twenty six for heated storage towards the north. For the six million and build heated storage towards the south. You still get heated storage, you get a public services building in the south. Win, win, win potentially. Um, just some of my first initial suggestions.
Yeah, no, the, you know, and I I I love the the idea, the forward thinking of a larger building in Caroline. I absolutely support that a hundred percent. The heated storage deficit really is in this area, right, in the in the rocky area, so we um. We are actually serviced okay down in the south, not saying that we we would not, we are going to need more room in Caroline. I'm not going to make the mistake and say that we're good for space because every time I say that, we had a new level of service somewhere. And all of a sudden, and the removal of a bay, and all of a sudden say, well, I thought you didn't need any more space. Well, I didn't know you were gonna do this and this. So I will confidently say we will absolutely need more space in in the south, but we still have a very high priority of space. Here in the rocky area.
Council Rapcliff?
Thank you. Yeah, would would this building also include like be a county administrative presence? You you mentioned an administrative area which I assume was around fire.
Yeah, that really hasn't been fleshed out much with our our group to come back with a recommendation, you know, we need to, there's. I think there is time to have this conversation about what is the future of the administration group in in Caroline, what type of presence? The level of service that we want to continue or or provide in the Caroline area. That needs to be a discussion, you know, as a as a leadership team. Group internally as well as coming back to to strategic planning about that, and that that is, this is very preliminary today. It's it's on the table, right? It's, we know that we have two staff that are working out of the out of that. That little Atco shack on the corner, which is very functional for that. Could those be relocated and then um be able to dispose of that? Of that highway commercial service lot and sell that as to somebody else? Absolutely, it's it's an option, but we would just have to. Reconfigure, everything gets bigger, right, on Wes, we're looking at the new build and. What are those priorities? Since we haven't really had a whole bunch of discussions internally, and this is the first time we've had it with you guys, so if that becomes a higher priority. With this group, then it becomes part of the design.
Yes, okay, another unfair question. Sorry, because there's also the old fire building right downtown that. Could be reconfigured for some purposes, alright.
Yeah, the the existing old buildings there, I'm reluctant to to hold on to them. We've, it's it's so much better from a facilities maintenance, you know. It's again, highway commercial uh uh availability, having that opportunity for somebody else coming into the community, I think it it could be repurposed. Um, and then build, you know, the new facility to, so that we're not having to carry that that old infrastructure ahead with us.
Yes, and and what I hear from the community as well is that, and I have to agree that uh some investment in Caroline becomes a priority.
Council Gibson?
The fire hall and the library share a wall, so um there has been a lot of talk. Just in our library that we would like to move into the fire hall if possible. Because that would give a lot more space for functions that the library has been asked to do, and we have had to refuse because we don't have the space. So if there is at all a possibility that we could utilize the fire hall for that reason, because with the shared wall. It could be an issue demolishing the fire hall because what would that do to our library? So um I'd just like to keep that in mind.
Council Lyte?
Uh, thank you, thank you, Reeve Swanson. Always find it challenging to piece together this jigsaw puzzle of our hamlets. And how it all works together and fits together. Um, and looking at the sighting for potential public services building in. In Caroline and maybe that being in the industrial, uh it was suggested there was a number of options around. Servicing that those those lots, and one thing that kind of struck me is a seed cleaning plant is being a. A high water consumer, I do, it's not maybe apparent to me on the surface of why a seed cleaning plant would need. A lot of, a lot of water, but uh maybe is is there. So I can I can understand the truck wa- or a car wash, truck wash using a lot of water, but seeds to me, you mix seeds and water together. You get a plant. Uh, so usually that's probably not.
Yeah, and I apologize, actually, I I uh I trust my engineers have provided me good information, and if that's not accurate, then I'll get them. The the point isn't lost that a high, high use um facilities, you know, it when you're creating your own, because it creates a a low pressure system. And of course, estimated around thirty thousand dollars per, you know, the instead of municipality bearing the cost for the the larger lift station. Each lot owner, so that also would take away some of the appeal, that, you know, each one would have an increased development cost. And then in a few, but there's, and there is a big push, you know, even with Albert Environment about water reuse and be, you know, high efficiency. Yeah, so we are looking, even with our lagoon system there, um I don't know if you heard the term purple pipe. But it was the idea of be using some of that effluent there to be repurposed for even Albert Environment staff and thought maybe that car wash could use that. I don't, I don't know how a car wash would would use that, but you know, we could certainly for the amount of downhill work that's being done in the area, you would. Could maybe have see a better use for it for like that, or or dust suppression or something that that uh that less than than perfectly clean water could be used for.
Mr. Hough?
Yeah, so I just wanted to touch on um the, again, the priorities being. Making sure that we're accomplishing council's goals in that the um. Capital projects to support those standard services are a priority and the additional projects, even though they're. Maybe more fun or more exciting, those in order to continue with those standard services, those that infrastructure. And capital projects need to happen to support those core services or those core services no longer can can function properly.
Thank you. Uh, Director Hans, so when you were talking about the wastewater water for. Particularly of the county owned property there, um so that did not include the residential to the west. Side of that at all, so we we didn't calculate any volumes could be required for that area. Within the ham, within the hamlet, it was just strictly. calculate any volumes could be required for that area within the ham, within the hamlet. It was just strictly for our um, hundred and twelve acre parcel.
Yeah, the, the hundred and twelve acres does um, include that residential area that's reserved. There's never been any discussion about advancing additional residential into that property. It's, you know, the first problem that we wanted to get is actually was the highway commercial, right? That was option one or, or phase one, which we didn't, haven't even constructed the road. Um, we know that we would need either a lift station or these independent uh, lift stations for that. But then capacity of the, of, of Caroline and the ability to treat that water, et cetera, became the, the higher priority, so um, really not any farther ahead because we haven't fixed anything down there, but um, we're, we're getting a better, better handle on and, and be able to bring back to, to council in the future that, that we know that, that services likely, if you're going to take the extent and run them out to the highway commercial, I think it should go up into the industrial as well. Um, but the, the overall treatment capacity of the effluent will definitely take it into account for the other uh, residential area that was included in there, but we have never done any of the concept planning about density, et cetera, or servicing that area to date.
Okay, thank you. And my second question was uh, in regards to uh, the, the very north lot, the four point three hectares, our ten acre status now where our current salt sand storage is at, correct, that larger one, or is it, or is it in that, that cul-de-sac loop, loop where we have our salt source and storage?
Yeah, we go to the, the um, to the northeast area of structure plan, the Village of Caroline. Oh, yeah, there.
Yep.
Um, the one right on the end of the north cul-de-sac, that ten acres right there.
That, that one is currently where we have a salt storage.
So there is a salt storage facility there and a forty by, or sixty by sixty shop, so three bays.
So could the potentially, we put this Caroline Public Services Building on that as well as our room, or would we need to?
Actually, the location that we'd preliminary discussed with, uh, preliminarily, preliminarily, uh, discussed with emergency service was actually closer to the south, um, would be uh, right where Jana's got the, the hand to the west, right there. Um, between that, either one or two of those lots, uh, based on the utilization and the access to the highway. We do, we feel that the highway commercial lot should be reserved for highway commercial and, you know, being that they, if it was going to be a five bay sixteen thousand square foot building, the setbacks on a three acre lot gets pretty small, you know, that for, for comparison, it's eight acres in, in Condor today. And with, by the time you get the grading done and the little storm pond, we chewed up the majority of that lot, so um, we'd be, at first we're looking at that southwest purple lot, closest to the highway.
Thank you for that. Council Rock.
Thank you. Um, we, we've talked about issues with um, on, on the septic side. However, what is the capa- I assume then that there is sufficient capacity to produce potable water? That, that there's no issue or restriction there for additional development?
Yeah, we're in much better shape when it comes to the water. It's just the requirement of a looping system there in order to get better circulation in that area. Um, but we're, we're in a lot better shape. A, it's gonna cost a lot less to, to upgrade the water system than it would be the wastewater system.
Okay, great, thank you.
Council Melhoff.
Uh, thank you, Reeve. Um, since we already have infrastructure on the ten, to me, it makes sense just to continue that and then have more lots available for companies and organizations, but I'm obviously not, not the expert, but that's where my brain would go. But for me, it's not about being more fun or exciting. It truly is about the requirement of um, a station to be rebuilt in the now Hamlet of Caroline. It was just never done previously because that was the, that, the agreement was that the village was responsible for the building and that Clearwater County was responsible for everything else regarding fire services in that community. Truly, I believe that if it was, if we looked at it, including the village, back when we were strategic planning fire halls, I don't think that we would have done the fire halls in the order in which they were previously done, i.e. the Nordic um, Condor, then Lessaville. I think that if Caroline was included, a different order would have been, would have been decided on. Um, simply because of the agreement of the day. That fire hall needs replaced. It is dangerous backing up a level one pumper on a major provincial highway. It is dangerous to the crew, it's dangerous to the, like, I'm shocked that that building hasn't been taken out more. I know that it has been hit. I'm shocked it hasn't been hit more. So it's, it's about safety to that crew and to that team, and the, and the now Hamlet is our responsibility. So it's not about building something exciting. It's about making sure that those members get what they need to be doing their job safely.
And entering those other bays from the alley extremely tight.
Council Gibson.
Uh, yes, it is rather interesting. When the fire truck comes out, they have to have somebody on the, the street to stop traffic. And we have an agreement with a gentleman behind us on the alley so that we can use part of his lot so we can get the trucks out because we're driving on his lot. So God help us if he ever sells and somebody says, no, you can't. Because I don't know what we do. But then we've also got to shunt vehicles. If we want to get a vehicle, it's so packed in there, if we, how do we have one vehicle in the middle to get out, we've got to shunt the other trucks out of the way so we can get the vehicle out, so good for the time, I guess, when it was originally built, but we've expanded so much that now it's just not feasible anymore, but they're still, you know, they're working on it and they figured out a way of getting everything in and out, so good on them for that.
Council Northcott.
Um, I guess, uh, just for, Council Melhoff's comments I know historically, uh, since two thousand and twenty-two, uh, to me it was evident that I could, you know, it's, it's really evident to see that there's an up, upgrade needed uh, for an emergency services building in the southern portion of the county. Um, in the light industrial area, there's need for water and sanitary. Uh, even the emergency services building structure itself, all that costs millions of dollars. So the way I see this here, I, you know, I brought it forward. It is a desire to create a restricted surplus count for some of these projects in twenty twenty-two. It didn't gain any traction then, um, but what I see here now is we're here today with uh, some information, but, but no funds to move forward to construct this stuff. So um, it's sort of similar to the uh, agenda item earlier this morning about the egg services board. Um, you know, you come to a point in time where you have the information, but you don't have the dollars to, to do the project, so I suppose it's a disappointment there.
Alright, so there is a staff recommendation uh, to accept the um, Clearwater County Caroline Public Public Services Building Report update as for information, because I do believe there is going to be um, some more information gathered and brought back to a strategic planning meeting for consideration, probably the fall or close to. Okay, thank you for that. Alright, um, uh, Council Northcott.
Well, maybe I'll try this again. Um, would there be a opportunity to make a motion to recommend to council to create a restricted surplus count and set aside annually? I think the need is, previously I'd asked for five hundred thousand or thought that might be a number, but uh, try that again. I'll make a motion that uh, the Strategic Planning Committee recommend to council to create a restricted surplus count in the amount of five hundred thousand dollars annually for the future construction of an emergency service building in the Hamlet of Caroline.
Yeah, Council North Rock, and then I'll go to you, Councilor. Is this in regards to the motion?
Actually, I would like to make a different motion according to the recommendation.
Okay, then do you have a, a comment on the motion? Go ahead, Councilor Melhoff.
Uh, thank you, Reeve. So a fire facilities um, fund already exists. Um, so I don't know that we need to build a new one. Um, it has six hundred and two thousand dollars in it. Um, perhaps we need to instead fund that further, um, but there is one that already exists, so making a new one, I don't know that that's the answer. Um, just like I recommended earlier, um, in, in twenty twenty-six, it's being suggested, I believe coming out of the operational administrative facility account, six million coming out, I think, to build the heated storage in the north. My suggestion was that this is a higher priority to, to myself than that. Um, so my suggestion was to use that six million to do um, the Hamlet of Caroline project rather than building the heated facility to the north Rocky Mountain House. Um, but yeah, there already is a fire facilities account, so I don't know that building a new one is the answer.
Director Hagan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And Council Northcott, for clarity, when would you suggest this funding take place, twenty twenty-five or twenty twenty-six?
Go ahead, Council Northcott.
Possible?
In that case, if you're suggesting twenty twenty-five, the committee would have to recommend a funding source.
Thank you.
Of which has been suggested earlier that we could, well, we missed the tax rate by law this year, but um, there is an option to, in that regard where we would like to postpone projects or what, or switch priorities around. But there is a motion on the floor and if there's no further discussion, we're going to I'll call the question. So all those in favor? Those opposed?
Can, sorry, can we read the motion again? Because I, I got all of a sudden very confused.
Okay, counselor, uh, sorry, um, did you want Counselor Northcott or did you get it? Okay, Counselor Northcott made the motion, sorry.
I did not have the motion written down. Um, I just, but I think I remember correctly unless Jana has it recorded. Okay.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Thompson.
That the Strategic Planning Committee recommends that council direct administration to create a restricted surplus account and contribute five hundred thousand dollars per year for upgrades and construction in the Hamlet of Caroline.
Council Northcott.
That would, yeah, for emergency services building, but that would, that captures what my thoughts.
For emergency services?
Yeah.
Okay, services. So I will call the question. Are you clear on the, clear on the motion?
Clear.
Okay, so all those in favor? Those opposed? And that motion's carried. Okay, are there no other? Uh, go ahead, Councilor Melhoff.
Um, thank you, Reeve. So what type of a motion would be required to actually shift the project to the north for heated storage and shift that priority to being this instead? Because we're talking about priority setting and, and the importance of, of setting priorities. This would be higher on the list. So the six million that is going to be allocated for heated storage up by the airport, I believe this is more important. So what type of a motion is required in which to make that shift?
Um, Mr. Hug.
Well, the Strategic Planning Committee could recommend that um, this happen within the twenty twenty-six budget document. However, I think, you know, there would need to be um, maybe some more background information brought forward on the heated storage and the full-time staff implications. Um, and also, you know, the implications on the um, the e- fleet that's being, going to be housed in that project, like what the um, implications are of not going forward on that project.
Council Rock.
Thank you, Reeve. Um, I also think the solid waste structure on the north is not as high a priority a- as this development. I, I appreciate the information that administration has brought to us about Caroline today. My assumption is that it's not complete, that it's an ongoing process. And building a uh, a ser- a new services building in Caroline, I think is also contingent on uh, some water and sewer work. And I'm not sure that enough time has gone into developing that as well. And that's why I didn't support the motion. But I, I think there's more options to look at here. Is, is the motion that uh, this work in Caroline, it now becomes a number two priority? I- is that the information we need to provide to administration?
So, did you have, no. Um, so with that, um, the question was asked as far as uh, that discussion regards to heated storage to the north, um, this Council Melhoff, I'm just paraphrasing what you've just asked. Uh, maybe that could be brought back to a strategic planning meeting in regards to having, as Mr. Hagan suggested, uh, or does administration want a motion to that effect? Go ahead, Director Hens.
Yeah, I think um, it's, it's a much larger conversation about funding, you know, it, Mr. Hagan brought it up numerous times about the, the, the lack of funding for this. Today's pretty specific about, you know, each individual items there again being considered in its, in itself. Um, you have, do have a supported motion there from the committee as a recommendation to council, and so it'll be under consideration again at the council meeting. Um, but I think we really need to, you know, touch on all of these items there that, that, that cost a lot of money. And then we bring it back as a more holistic discussion, bringing all of them back and saying, okay, here's the plan as we've discussed over these last few meetings compared to what our existing um, uh, primary uh, capital funding items are, put that math against each other and then uh, start having it as a whole. Because there, again, there's been lots of suggestions, you know, whether it be the heated storage to the north or whether it be the, or the, the waste transfer site. Uh, maybe there's something else on the list there that, that could be prior, reprioritized. So I, I think we do, would have to bring it back in the future in more of a, a bit more holistic manner there with, with more information about the other projects and just bringing them up and, and putting them up against each other in essence.
I would agree. So um, looking at the time, uh, is there any, um, I'm, I'm not wanting to limit discussion because I feel this is going to come back uh, probably in June. There's a strategic planning in June. I believe it's on the twentieth or something like that. We could have that discussion again then or add that to the plan, I don't know, um, at that point in time. Um, would probably be best, and then that way we could have a more holistic of uh, plans for twenty twenty-six at that point in time. Council Melhoff, and then I'll go Council Northcott and then go to lunch.
Okay, well, we'll see how this goes then. Um, the strap, strap planning committee recommend to council that within the twenty twenty-six budget document, the solid waste and heated storage in the north portion of the county be shelved so council can flush out the needs within the Hamlet of Caroline.
Okay, some motion? So any other discussion on that motion or did you have discussion on the motion, Council Northcott? Okay, go ahead.
Not really sure what to think of the motion. Um, really, the committee or council has the opportunity to really postpone any project or anything that they would, that they so choose to desire to, so I don't know if a motion is actually required to, to postpone that item or, or set it aside.
As, yeah, as mentioned before, I, I had anticipated that this whole discussion would come back in June so that we could have a um, uh, versus shelving. It would be nice to have the, that opportunity to really weigh all the information together versus to park those um, projects at this time, so that's, I feel the intent of your motion, correct? Um, go ahead, Council Rock on this.
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Um, this is the first real discussion we've had of uh, issues surrounding Caroline and the priorities that go with it. And as I said before, I appreciate uh, the information being brought forward. Um, I think this motion is a responsible way to proceed to readjust the priorities as we uh, come to understand the reality in Caroline. So uh, I will support this motion.
Okay, any other, uh, Council Melhoff?
Um, Council Northcott is right. Uh, we have the ability to shift priorities um, as, as required and as needed. It has to be done through a motion, which is why I created a motion around it, because we can't do it without it being a motion, so that's why I created a motion to do it.
Okay, I won't be supporting the motion because I feel that co- administration hasn't had the opportunity to bring back a holistic um, uh, program, um, comprehensive uh, report in regards to all the deficit, all the deficiencies within the Hamlet as it is today. And so I was hoping maybe there would be an opportunity, uh, maybe at our June meeting to have those discussions. to have those discussions and balance it off with the existing, uh, projects that we have identified for 2026. But, um, so I don't believe in shelving something until we have full information, and I appreciate the information that was brought forward today because that is the step in the right direction, so with that. All right, so motion on the floor from Counselor Melhoff to, um, shell the heated storage solid waste projects and bring forward, uh, the plan for the Caroline Public Services Building. Correct? Until, go ahead.
Finish. Shelf them until we've, uh, determined all the needs within the hamlet of Caroline. Um, I 100% agree, um, that we need a holistic comprehensive information about the deficiencies within, within our newly acquired hamlet. However, that number is, um, most certainly going to be higher, um, not lower. Um, so the needs most certainly are going to be higher, not lower. We will be forced to make priority, um, decisions. I would rather shelf them now and have administration stop working towards those priorities that are shown in the 2026 year. They will already be doing work to get that stuff ready for, for, um, being done in 2026. So, we might as well shelf them now so that they can stop doing the work in 2026 rather than giving them another nine months of thinking they're going to have to do it.
Counselor Lahit?
Another challenging decision to make, especially if we're asked to look forward into the next term and, and kind of set priorities for people that may not be s- it may be a different people with a different mandate, a different, um, set of vision moving forward, so, um, I think if we're asked to look forward, this is the most prudent way to do that, is to, to give at least a pathway through. I think we're in, in very sound financial position, we have a number of operate, or, uh, options to be able to fund projects into the future. Uh, sometimes when we get faced with, uh, like the amalgamation, it's a, it's a disruption in the timeline of any municipality for sure to absorb uh, uh, another municipality, so we know there'll be some disruptions to our asset management, to our, um, our planning uh, documents, to our vision. Uh, it, it has to incorporate a new reality, so I think we need to look at all the options before us and figure out what's the best one for our community.
For sure. Thank you. All right, so no other lights, I will call the question, all those in favor? And those opposed? The motion's carried. Perfect, thank you. So with that, we're gonna have a quick, uh, have a break for lunch and come back at 1 o'clock, please.
And welcome back. We just finished having lunch. It is the Strategic Planning Committee Council Committee of a Whole for May the 12th. And we are now down to item six point three, which is the Nordic project update. And I'll turn that back over to Public Works, please. Ms. Reig, good. Welcome.
Good afternoon. Um, we have been updating council throughout the years through the Capitol status report of Nordic projects. And the ones that we're going to focus on today are ones that more have impact on the community. Significant impact for some. So I was just going to go through the Nordic portions for like the residential. And then if anybody has questions, we can loop back or we can kind of address them at a whole because our concepts are kind of similar. And I don't think you want to hear me repeat myself constantly about Nordic, but maybe. Um, so the first one is high density west. So the designated area is approximately six acres for this one. And it is zoned high density, which is for multifamily or apartments. And they have a typical densities of thirty to seventy units. When we were first looking at the development plan and the estimate estimates that we have in our current project is um, so for multi parcel subdivision plan. So that was when we would go in and decide how many within the six acres that we are going to sell. Service them all, do internal road systems, storm water management plan, et cetera. So our revised development plan includes subdividing this area as one parcel. So more or less the county would be looking at servicing the area and then leaving it to the purchaser developer to go and do tree removals or internal road system, their storm water plan as they see fit. This way we found that we're not kind of pigeon holding developers into certain size lots. There is the potential to subdivide further if a developer wanted. There is the ability to connect deep utilities onto Stewart Street. This initial plan, we're connecting utilities onto Center Street Development. Um, this does have an impact on current mobile homes that are located within this six acres. And if we were to proceed or sell the lot, they would have to be removed. Um, service commercial is the same idea. It's approximately two acres. And the original plan was to subdivide it into multi parcel, whether it be three to five. And now we're looking at just the revised development to subdivide this area as one parcel. This one is only a little different because we weren't going to do deep utilities. Because dependent on the developer's vision, there is the capability to tie into Stewart Street in multiple locations. The services are within the ditch system, so they would not be tearing up the asphalt. Um, again, there is subdivision potential if that is the vision of the developer. They would also be in charge of their storm water management plan. High density east, it's approximately six point six acres to do the entire designated area. The original development plan, again, was the multi lot subdivision for the entire six point six. The revised development plan, we're looking at maybe doing in two phases and we'll start with the two acres. Um, and then just due to the lay of the land, we're put phase two postpone until further development is required. And then this we would loop in the upgrades to Memorial Crescent. We do have the engineer going back and forth on this one. So I did attach a couple aerials of the areas that we're looking at subdividing as the one parcel. And for the high density east, again, there are three active mobile homes that would need to be relocated if we are going to proceed with the construction on this next year. Um, and we are going back and forth with the engineer just to tie in that memorial question potentially to this development and the servicing. So we don't have details on that, but we were just kind of looking what the committee kind of feels. If this is the right way to go, um, postpone if you're in support of developing this. Um, another one that I, we wanted the committee to look at is the resort commercial. So currently in the 2025 capital plan, we're looking at starting engineering next year for this. Um, we're looking at a revised development plan as well to do this as one lot. And there, this one does have potential interest in it already. However, there are no services to the lots. The services to these lots that we would have included in the high dense, or sorry, the, yeah, hi, sorry, commercial. Oh my goodness, sorry. Um, in the historic commercial core phase two is where the utilities would loop around and tie into this resort as well as Stewart Street. Is there any particular questions on us looking at the one parcel? Is that something the committee would like to support moving forward? Any questions?
Counselor Mello?
Thank you. I definitely support this, this path forward where we're leaving it significantly more flexible for developers to kind of write their own destiny of what they would like to see in a parcel that they would develop. I, I really like that. Um, I had a question with regards to the resort commercial. Is there any point in doing any work there if the servicing isn't going to be there yet? Because to have somebody, have it subdivided, have somebody potentially buy it to develop it with their not being servicing and then they have to put in potentially their own servicing to then have them turn around and have to connect municipal servicing as part of the requirements in the hamlets. I don't know that there's necessarily a point of getting there if there's no servicing yet.
So we have gone back and forth. Um, other counties do a kind of cost share like agreement. If a developer, if developer is interested in a parcel that is not currently serviced, they would be responsible for bringing the services onto there. There are options of doing cost share. People along that service have to tie into it. And we have let the developers know that there are no services there. And that would be maybe an agreement the county would look into. I, we've been back and forth with planning, but there is no set. Set plan because nobody has actually come for a proposal.
Thank you. Okay. Um, Counselor Ackoff?
Thank you. I have a number of questions. Um, the big high level one is how much of this development is interconnected? We know we have to upgrade the deep services in, in a large part of this area. You know, how would that be staged as far as priorities would go?
The residential, um, the west, the east, this service commercial and the resort commercial are more or less independent of each other. The big item that connects the service commercial and the high density west is Center Street Road Development. Um, we plan on services coming on the Center Street Road Development and servicing high density west.
Okay. Okay. All right. That brings another question. Um, the construction of Center Street is going to, impacts some of those mobiles in the northwest corners of the, the west side there. Would that be all of them?
Center Street impacts three active lease holders.
Okay. Yes, this picture seems older than, I think one of these at least has been, is removed.
Um, so in the service commercial, that building that you can see when it ties into Stewart Street is the old library. So this outline here is, um, so they're all impacted by high density west, but Center Street impacts three active lease.
In, in that northwest corner of the, of the west piece, okay. And then the rest of that lot would be serviced from there, the rest of this parcel?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Yeah, because, uh, you know, there's going to be issues clearing a part of that, that section. Okay, and, uh, the Memorial Crescent and that high density residential and the resort commercial, they're, they're all connected there in a row. How would they be serviced?
The resort commercial is a subdivision on its own. It would be the only, there's no impacted residence for the resort commercial. The only thing that would not be ready if we're to sell it and rezone it before 2027 is services. And that's when there, we've been back and forth about the options of if somebody came around and wanted to buy it, would they supply their own or not? For the high density east and Memorial Crescent, they can be, they don't have to be connected to each other. However, it, if we're going to go in and do the construction on Memorial Crescent, we're looking at different options of how the roadway would maybe loop around and come out to Stewart Street in a different direction. We're still working the ups and downs of that.
Okay. How much support is there from developers on this concept of, you know, taking a whole parcel?
Director Hanson?
Yeah, I think it's, it's fair to say the inquiries that we've had, um, the ones that I've been a part of is that they typically have a larger vision. And then once you get to crunch time, that's when the vision kind of gets smaller. But then the deterrent is always servicing. I know if it's not serviced, then they look at other communities that actually have servicing available. Um, the discussions, again, preliminary discussions about the resort commercial um, was, was a high level of interest for that specific area, even recognizing that the other ones are going to be done sooner. That was, um, kind of their, their business model was affixed to a resort commercial zoning. Um, very common, you know, about utilizing our endeavor to assist, um, policy. You know, that they would construct the disservicing in order to extend over to that lot. That would be all done through a development agreement, development permit. Uh, the first step would of course that, you know, that council would have to agree to, to expediting that one under the principle that we're not going to expedite our plan, but that, that the, the developer would be responsible for it. And then we'd have to go through the rezoning and then as well as the subdivision application, which we are going to determine basically the outer limits of what the, of what the subdivision could look like. And then if the developer were to buy, buy the entire parcel, they could potentially break that down subject to a subdivision application into smaller lots and then, then sell them that way. Um, so we think that there's, it's a more viable and more cost effective option is to sell these in larger, larger parcels. You can see that Kate's provided the, you know, our revised estimates based on a couple of years ago. And mostly it's been brought up that we've significantly reduced our, our cost outputs there in order to get it basically ready for a developer to come in and then develop their plan. Um, we don't think it was a miss by any means. They're up in the historic commercial core. I think that's what works for that specific area when you already have existing buildings, et cetera. Um, we needed to put in parking lots, et cetera. These, these other developments there can be all contained within itself. And we feel that it's, it's more of a cost effective way to still, uh, still accomplish what council meant to, to do when they set these up as a higher priority. The ultimately, the, the largest question is the priority of the existing mobile home leases versus construction. You know, if, if is this group, you know, we want to just reaffirm that we have the, um, Notification letters ready to be sent out, which they have not been sent out yet, because we wanted to, to get this development plan in front of council one more time. To get your feedback on, on advancing, in order to advance the capital plan as presented during the twenty five budget. Is that these notification letters need to go out to these affected residences. We want to modify the plan, that's what we're here today, today is to discuss if the plan. If there's a recommendation to modify this plan by any, by whatever scenario, and there's multiple scenarios that it, it could be modified. And we just got to go and see where council is leaning toward. On how they see this being developed and what is the highest priority.
Okay, thank you, I have more questions, but I shouldn't take all the time.
Okay, I'll, uh, bounce, I'll, I'll, I'll come back to you if there's no other questions after Councilor Mello, go ahead, Councilor Mello.
Um, thank you, Eve, so it sounds like the resort commercial is potentially being created because somebody is interested in it. Now, I know we're in open session, so I have to be very careful about stuff like that. Um, but could we then expedite the plan in order to help facilitate that partnership? Cause at that point, a developer is helping to pay for some of the infrastructure. Can we adjust any part of the plan to speed that section up? Or do we have to do all of the other ones to get to that? Do you, I don't know if I'm asking the question right, okay, can we like skip ahead to the good part? The developer comes and does it?
Um, so the two projects that would be linked with the resort commercial would be Stewart Street and. Historic Commercial Core Phase Two. The original plan of why we bumped those back two years and bumped up Center Street is to use Center Street as a detour while we have Stewart Street tore up.
Right.
Um, again, too, it was based on sales. Of Phase One before maybe we wanted more lots developed and ready for sale in Phase Two. So, yes, we can switch projects around. However, it just depends on priorities if we want more historic commercial course sites ready or residential sites ready.
I, I want sites where developer's gonna do it ready. And that's why we.
It just sounded like that had a developer that would help us.
Like, and again, we're in open session, so I'm trying to.
Kim might have more ideas because they go through planning, but like Eric said, it's quite preliminary, they've reached out to us, they've just asked services, they asked about. If we have a plan for the site, which we do not, because we didn't plan for engineering starting until next year.
Can we shift Center Street at all further west? Then less impact to the current people to make sure that we can do that Stewart Street, Center Street detour thing. And then that would still give sewer, uh, servicing to the resort commercial by twenty twenty seven and not impact those residents. Is that possible?
Director Hagan, or Director, I was looking at you, Director Hanson, sorry.
So I want to be clear, um, so a scenario. So what you're considering is going back and actually finishing the work on Stewart Street and Historic Commercial Core Phase Two. And not constructing Center Street or High Density West.
No, 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 um, I'm suggesting not construct High Density West. Because we, but we need Stewart, Center Street in order to create the detour while we rebuild Stewart Street. Can we shift Center Street far enough west, like it looks like it's impacting a chunk of one or two? Can we shift it far enough west that it doesn't impact them? So that, and leave the high density till it's needed or a developer comes. To make it so that the servicing for the resi, for the resort commercial can be done for the developer that wants to come, so that we can still do the Stewart Street upgrade. I hope I'm making sense.
No, it, it does, um, I guess it's an idea, um. Now, again, I've, I've put it back to this group, does, does, are the existing mobile home leases, uh, the higher priority? So moving the design of the road over, um, is possible, because you're just, we'd just be taking away more of the golf course in essence, right? So you're actually moving that footprint farther to the north in order to avoid, um, the existing mobile homes and then. Ultimately, we're going to have to do something with that, um, sanitary infrastructure for those mobile homes, though it's been. It's in pretty much non-existent there, there's, there's a cavity, I believe that, that actually has where the sanitary lines run down through there, there's on a. There's not much life left in that sanitary system. And it's been avoided to be an upgraded because of the, the development plans we've had for the area. So if we, um, do additional servicing, you know, and run those other services that are slated for, for, uh, Center Street. And you, and we're wanting to keep these mobile home, home leases there in effect, and we need to determine for a period of time, you know? Cause it, we might actually have to upgrade that system in order to service those even in the interim because of the state of that infrastructure. Especially once we start rerouting about how they're going to be hooked in, because they're, everything's. Um, the existing services are kind of scattered and in, in poor, poor condition, as we're upgrading the services coming around. If we know that those mobile homes are going to be staying for X, Y, Z period, period of time, we might actually have to upgrade those in order to even just service them in the interim. So.
That would cost taxpayers a lot.
All right, again, it's not a scenario we've planned for at all, because that's never been a part of the plan up till right now. So that would, we, if, if they become a priority that, that none of the leaseholders are provided notice at this time, but we want to con, advance construction. We would have to relook at the plan. But that's why we're here today.
Councilor Rockland?
Thank you, um, a- as far as the current plan for Center Street. And tho- those mobile homes that would be if i- impacted, I, I don't think that's an issue. It's, uh, it's on the east side. Of, um, that high density residential area where, you know, we really should not move on that right now. And we have quite an inventory of residential lots. Just having, uh, the, the high density on the east side. Of Stewart Street, just south of that Memorial Crescent. That, uh. Is, would create land that we don't have available right now. You know, of a, of a type that we don't have right now. But I think from the questions I already asked. Those could be, the deep services could go in separately.
Is this?
Yes. And, and, um, that high density on the east side of Stewart, like immediately south. Of the Memorial Crescent.
Director Hanson?
Yeah, we, until we make a decision about the high density east, wouldn't recommend doing anything with the Memorial Crescent.
Yeah.
Until we actually do that all as one project. You know, we know that that's, that's, uh, older infrastructure, the, the road, the road is, uh, was an old SP ninety. And the sidewalks are in poor repair, um, and then the connection again, so we wouldn't recommend doing anything with the Memorial Crescent until we actually. Had a timeline for doing high density east. High Density East, of course, was supposed to be, um, was kind of slated for the, uh. Staff housing, uh, initiative that's been identified as a, a lack of available land for staff housing, so that's what we kind of earmarked for, for that. Um, as well as the pressures for the resort commercial, you know, we have another, uh, tenant on the resort commercial area of the existing, uh. Mary's Treasures and the, and the, and the post office. And then the high density west, um, that was added a couple of years ago to, again, to give a, a variety of different zonings that, uh, for developers, potential developers come in. So any one of those could be eliminated from the, the current plan. Uh, love some parameters around what that, what the long range plan would be. Like I say, how are we, how are we gonna, how do we want to deal with these, uh, mobile home leases and? We've already been, as people move out, we're not, uh, renewing new leases, so through time, you know, there's a significant amount of them have, have disappeared. Um, some had no, don't, don't appear to have any intention of leaving anytime soon. So it's really, it's Clearwater County's property to, to try to, um. To accommodate and trying to develop a plan around, we just need to see what, what is the highest priority and then, well, we'll, we'll develop the plan around that priority.
Okay. That surface commercial area on the west side of Stewart Street, uh, have we been getting inquiries for that property? Oh, okay.
I know there was an inquiry, that's why actually it was pushed on the priority list two years ago. That's how it actually, it wasn't even on the radar up till it actually got put on our priority list. Um, so that was actually a request from council.
Yes, and, uh. The wave hasn't, uh, seemed to have continued for, for growth. That appeared to be there a few years ago. Really, uh. The conclusion seems to be that we should. Hold on all of this except proceed with Center Street. Is, is. Would that be a reasonable position?
Uh, that's a decision of this committee, um, I'd say, that's exactly why we're bringing the current plan as we're going through detailed design, preliminary engineering. As an update, um, because if this committee wants to change the plan and just do Center Street, then that's what we'll do.
From a, from a development perspective, what would be the impact there? If we.
You'd have no developable lots when you're, you've, so you, we put in the investment for the, uh. For the, that Center Street with the idea of there would be a cost recovery in the sale of lots. That's the whole reason why we were creating this opportunity is to try to get some of that money back through. Uh, for our cost development through the sale lots and, um, we would want to have some parameters around. If not now, then when would we, could we move forward with actually creating these larger lots that we could actually sell them? If the, um, because of the existing mobile homes, so. One might even might say, why, why would you put in that for now? You know, it's, it's a huge cost and we haven't even got into, it's going to have to be another one of those projects that are weighed against the others because it's still not funded. And then if we take away any point of revenue stream, which I'm hoping actually even as a larger lots. Is that we've reduced our development costs so much, we can actually take the sale of those lots and actually put it against the capital of that Center Street. Um, but if we can't reflect that because we can't sell any lots, then it's going to be tough to, to find the funding for these projects.
Do we have any marketing research on, uh? You know, proceeding in this manner where, uh, we're trying to market the whole section?
Yeah, it's never been our purview, this has been council's, uh, vision for Nordick, um, we've never. Engaged a, a marketing analysis to say if you go this far over the next ten years, this is what's gonna happen, I. You know, this, this group, I remember when, when you first came on as elected, they were excited about the development of Nordick. Um, we've been continuously updating about how things have sold and then some of them have turned back, so. You know, I could see certainly the, the cautious optimism of Nordick. But the continuously what the biggest hangup has been is the lack of servicing. And the, the lack of readiness for development to come in, because when somebody comes in and the services aren't there. Even if you put that on the developer and saying, well, you just have to do five million dollars worth of upgrades to get it ready. It's never been an appetite that anybody wanted to take that leap. You know, but if we have it at property line, then that's, I'm sure that's much more sellable.
If we don't have Center St- as a detour. While we're doing the deep services along Stewart. It puts us that much, uh, more removed from selling. The, these other properties.
Yeah, we actually did have an alternative, uh, detour, um, but it's still a better. It's a better detour to have Center Street in place.
Yes.
Yeah, for sure.
Okay, um, I see we have another.
Councilor Mello?
Thank you, Eve, um, I think that it goes back to like the phis- the philosophy. Because, um, if you're just gonna do Center Street and not continue, then why do Center Street at all? Because Center Street is being done in order to facilitate the rebuild of Stewart. So if you're not, if you're like, no, we're just gonna do Center and then not continue, well then, don't even do Center then, because. The whole point of doing Center was to upgrade Stewart, so, um. And to make it so they have access, because if you don't, if we're like, Kate, go rebuild Stewart, don't do Center. Then that entire community that's already up there, the lots up there, then no longer have any way in and out of that community. Other than by their UTV, like, that's kind of the only way in and out of that community then, and we can't, we can't do that either as a. Um, as a municipality, not even just as the developer in the community, we can't, we, we would never allow a developer to completely cut off. A section of the community, um, a fire truck wouldn't even be able to get up there to deal with any problems or an ambulance. To deal with problems in that part of the, of the community, so I think it goes back to philosophy, do you want to continue building this out or not? And if we have developers that are knocking on the door saying, if you build it out, we will do that, then. Maybe, but I don't know, I haven't been involved in those meetings to know how serious that is, if it's something we're willing to put tax dollars on the line to make sure that they come.
Well, in all, in all certainty, and I know COVID has actually pushed those sales quickly. And we have no lots available on, at all on the north side, so, um, is, is my understanding, I mean. At the end of the day, the people that come through, and I mean, we have spoken to one developer as council and, and towards some of his development there. Uh, had the opportunity a couple of weeks ago and, you know, and understand his vision with, with what he sees as coming in, into our area and. As it's no different than our co- common, uh, conversation with the town council and that is everybody's looking for serviced. Zoned lots. And so we're either committed to doing this or it's put on the shelf, but. Uh, my understanding from my conversations is, um, you know, hurry up and make one big mess and be done and. I mean, when I hear about, uh, other counties, for example, Yellowhead County, when they developed. That, um, subdivision just outside of Jasper Park, um. It sold out because it was there, done and, and people were willing to pay those dollars to have that, that access, so, um. It's, and there's, there's, there's the ways to fund it, Rhonda will give us many, many str-. Many doors to open and shut, whether we decide to walk through them or not, but, uh. Yeah, and at the end of the day, this is a huge development and I like the idea of having larger lots. Because to me that, that says a design build, for, that gives that, that developer the opportunity to do a design build and really, um. Foresee what they, what, 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 where their investment wants to go, so, um, I like that, I. I think that's a smart idea to doing that, so to me, the, if we're gonna do Center Street, we have to do High Density West, that only makes sense. Uh, because it's all in one area and then we can subdivide and let that, that go, but, uh, understanding that, uh. You know, at the end of the day, um, it's where, where this council lands and who knows, after October, the. The next council may have a different idea as well, so some of this too, so. Uh, go ahead, Councilor Rockland, you've got a few more questions.
Thank you, um, could you remind me what is the projected cost for Center Street? Just the street itself?
With asphalt surfacing, it will be approximately three to point two million.
Yeah, okay, just, just looking at this, that. If we were to have a, a developer come, come forward that wanted to do high density. On the east side of Stewart or develop that resort commercial. If we don't have Center Street in place. We're really pushed back that much further. To have that land available for developers to get the, the servicing. The deep services in through Stewart Street to those locations. Am I correct on that?
Yeah, the servicing for resort commercial would come on the Lane of Lily. Which is encompassed with the Historic Commercial Core Phase Two.
Oh, it would come from the south? Yeah, okay.
West, yeah.
But still would have, still Stewart Street would have to be dug up to do that.
Yeah, you would cross Stewart Street on, yeah.
And I. You know, I, I think we have higher priorities. Than this, but. If, if we don't do Center Street, it, it seems we're that much further removed from being able to, um, sell those other properties.
It has more impact on the. It has more impact on the residents. If we tear up Stewart Street without having Center Street in there, it will have more impact on the residents traveling to their house.
And if we didn't pave it? We didn't pave Center Street until we had Stewart Street dug up and put back and paved them both?
And that's the current plan is to do all the asphalt surfacing in the same year.
Okay.
Stewart Historic Commercial Core Phase Two, Center Memorial Crescent is the current plan is the scheduling, yeah.
Okay. So uh, of of that three point two million, how much of that would be asphalt?
Um, approximately just over a million.
Okay. I don't, to me, it logically seems that we should proceed with Center Street, which would impact only the west part of the uh West Stewart Street High Residential. While we uh see what develops in the market.
Yeah, um, speak briefly with planning to the high density and the resort commercial um like hotels and we just got one on Friday wanting to build condos with garages for people's stuff like that on Friday. Um, and they wanted a smaller parcel, so if we continued with East, just in preliminary talks, um, that would probably be where they would be looking. Um, but again, that's kind of, everybody right now is talks, right?
South of the duplexes in that
Yeah, that would be the east, yeah.
Would be a location.
And so the servicing for that high density residential east of Stewart Street and Memorial Crescent would come from the north?
They would come off Stewart Street. Um, we because the plan with the east isn't finalized with how much we want in phase one. It's we haven't determined if the servicing will be separate or together at this time. But currently Memorial Crescent servicing, yes, comes from the north off across Stewart Street.
Okay. I'm a bit confused as to what a clear path forward is here.
So it's uh maybe instead of focusing on where the servicing is gonna come from, um, so what from in generality, what you're proposing is that we we do not move forward with high density east. We do not move forward with high density west. We do not move forward with resort commercial. Uh, we only construct um Center Street. So what would you foresee as the um the trigger point in order to move forward with those other, with the notifications to our existing homeowners? Like, to what extent would you say that now is the time to move forward with these next portion of developments?
Interest from the market, from a development market would be my feeling. Or getting some of these other priorities taken care of.
I guess for for myself too, I mean, you know, looking at that service commercial as well, I mean, to me, it's um you it would be a stranded, you know, it's not service, so why would you not service that? I mean, it's coming, you know, further south from the existing um modern infrastructure. You know, it would be prudent to start linkage, that linkage properly. It seems logical to and continue that that self moving south with with services, especially deep services. Is it my understanding that once we start into Center Street, that those um um everything are those temporary leases lease um properties? Um, we don't know what's underneath them, that that they could be impacted, even though we don't, if we don't touch them.
Yeah, that's that's what we um, that's what we're alluding to, that the the sanitary infrastructure servicing those currently is in extremely poor condition.
Right.
And if we if we're if we're making a plan that that those are now going to stay in place until something else happens, like such as a development interest or a offer or whatever that might be, uh, we would have to look at upgrading those services um to make sure that we still have to provide, you know, there are there are renters. We have to provide a safe uh environment for them to to be able to to live on.
Councilor Melov?
Uh, thank you, Reeve. Um, Center Street is looks like it's being set up for two car lanes and two parking lanes. Um, like two parking spots, so like four cars wide. Is there an opportunity to not make that four cars wide and then that would allow for more space for the residents to stay until their infrastructure fails or till a developer comes?
Um, I'd recommend moving the road over before we reduce the standard of the road. Um, because of that, that's how that lines up with the long range plan.
Okay.
You know, this is this is our fifty hundred year plan for for Nordic. I would hate to to cut the corners on on reducing the road standard.
We've just always been told that it was meant to be a walking based community and to have parking on either side of a on either side of a road for however many kilometers that is.
Yeah.
It seems like a lot of of parking along the side of of a road and only one walking path for a community that was supposed to be a walking based community and or I believe there's a bylaw in place that they can use U T Vs and A T Vs in that community, but just seemed like a lot of seemed like a lot of parking.
Yeah, the 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 road design is consistent with our existing Nordic development plan. Uh, we've actually been criticized about the amount of parking that we've created, just because that is that it's gonna be undersized when it is fully developed because of the the parking lots for the Historic Commercial Core, for example, those are those are not large as well as the little bit of uh on it's the lack of back alleys, you know, due to the topography, there's not a whole bunch of back alley access. So there's gonna be a lot of front lot access into it. That's why you're having to park along the street. Um, whereas in in a normal residential setting there, you would have, you know, other access through a back alley or from the front onto the lots where, again, some of them, because of the topography, it's the access is limited.
All right, so in the uh agenda item, you've asked a few questions there or asked for some decisions in regards to these uh the breakdown of this item. So the first one is in regards to the high density residential west. There was a staff recommendation that the committee indicates for our the support for the development of the high density residential west in twenty twenty six. Then goes on to Stewart Street Service Commercial in regards to that the committee's case their support for the development of service commercial in twenty twenty six. Then in regards to the high density east, phase one. Again, support for that. And the then moving on to the resi- uh resort commercial. You know, development of one lot for twenty twenty seven. And then that the committee's support for the construction of Center Street in twenty twenty six. So those are the particular um recommendations within our agenda item. So looking for motions or need further clarification or questions? Go ahead, Councilor Gibson.
I'm not really sure on this, but um if we do ask the main street, which is Stewart Street, can there then is is it can then be attached to the um the other thinking? Not residential, but industrial or for the hotel is what I'm thinking in that area. Can are those two attachable or do we have to go someplace else to get there?
Sorry, I'm not quite put a new hotel or?
Well, you were you were talking about um the is it resort? Sorry.
The resort, the you're talking about to the resort to the higher.
Yeah. So can we do the main street and the resort?
Commercial.
Commercial and then um do that first? Or is there demand more for housing than that?
Like I say, I'd none of this has been, none of these priorities are based off demand. Uh, the only one that we've actually seen a demand for has been the resort commercial.
Okay.
And again, if if council is is looking at, you know, at the scenario planning, you know, of postponing some of the um these other developments, Center Street does make sense. You know, I think we if we receive an application um from a developer for the resort commercial, this was just a the resort commercial discussion, we really was just a would the committee be open to the rezoning and the subdivision, even though it's outside of the plan? I don't think there's any decisions that have to be made in order for us to change priorities to make sure that that service is ready to go. Um, I truly believe that actually because it's not part of our plan, that should be the developer's responsibility to extend those services. And they haven't not indicated that they weren't ready to extend those services out there. We know that they're coming from from the west, so yes, there'd be a crossing on Stewart Street, but Stewart Street doesn't require to be constructed in order to get this resort commercial on there. So it was more of an F Y I that you it may be a rezoning and a subdivision application coming for the resort commercial. Um, if you're comfortable with with putting it out to market because there again, this is only a single developer that's coming to the table. Is that type of model acceptable to council that we would just get this piece of land ready for that one individual? We have done it historically, but that also was in the Nordic infancy of development, you know, down there, the the where the shell is, for example, we had an application, we got the land ready and they came, they built, but um, so we have some interest up there. Um, it's really, I don't believe it's that owners to get it that rezoned and and subdivided and have and have it ready. If I think a developer comes with confidence and uh assurances and commitment, right? So and then however, whatever the priorities are for what we don't want to impact, we can design around that and come back with further recommendations. We're we're kind of on the fly here today. If the the plan is changing, which is which is fine, we just have to come back with a revised plan based on the new priorities. But it's definitely doable to have resort commercial ready and Center Street constructed. And the rest of the area is pretty much left alone with some more anomalies of possibly having to upgrade some infrastructure that's existing if we don't, because if there's a long term plan to keep it in that if if it if only ever is gonna get developed, if somebody comes to buy it or then um, we would probably have to do something with that infrastructure for sure.
Okay, thank you. I was just thinking of the um probability of the resort commercial being in a greater demand than the residential.
It seems to be that one that we hear more of, but um the demand has never been saying, give us your list of criteria so we can meet them. They always want to know what if we got done, what are our plans, which is kind of a clear indicator of um you know, it's not like saying, what can we do in order to get this successful for us? It's like, what are you guys gonna do so we'll come in here and and build? So it's I I my hat's off to planning for what they have to go through with this type of stuff. We're just trying to build it.
So question then for planning. So in regards to what we have, like high des- high density residential west of Stewart Street, that area. If a developer came in and said, no, I would like to do a resort commercial in that area, would that have to go through a process to get that rezoned? Because is it zone that I know we've done the area structure plan for Nordic? I'm I'm just curious on that.
Um, yeah, so that area obviously is identified in the development plan as um a higher density residential. Um, however, if um, you know, if council wanted to go through the process of rezoning that to something else, like the development plan is just a plan, you you know, is put together for suggested areas of different types of development. Um so they have some like proposed medium and high on that side, and then the resort commercial is kind of on the other side a little bit further away, but um if we wanted to develop um develop resort commercial in that area, but um I think they're just kind of looking possibly for an area to do that and where the resort commercial is currently identified um to for us to rezone and subdivide that wouldn't be um wouldn't be overly difficult. That that part of it, I mean, the servicing obviously would maybe need to be there, but it wouldn't affect anybody in that area though that it's proposed versus on the west side, um, because there's no development currently there.
Yeah, no, I'm just thinking if if a developer came with cash in hand on the table and said, I'm
Yeah, so it would be up to council to do the actual rezoning. They would the plans just to consider um where some of those developing developments would make sense to go.
For sure.
But um if they had an appropriate proposal and council was on, that would be totally up to them if they wanted to approve that rezoning.
Okay, thank you. Council Ratcliffe?
Okay, there's a couple of other things to consider. There are are two issues that will get uh quite a strong reaction from the community. Um, in the the west of Stewart Street area, there are a couple of residents that it would be unreasonable to move at this time. And of course, and then the other one is the loss of their post offices. There doesn't seem to be a space to relocate to. So from my understanding of the information here, if we proceed with Center Street, we would be ready to move quickly onto uh development at the high density east side of Stewart Street and on that uh resort commercial area. Yeah. And then in the meantime, hopefully we can sell some more residential lots and we won't have such a deficit in that to from account.
Okay. So again, some um recommendations that we can go through, so I'll go through them again one by one. And maybe we can make some motions to that effect and how we wish to support or not support. What's going on? So the first one is in regards to the high density residential west. Staff recommendation is whether the committee indicates our support to that development of high density residential west in twenty twenty six. So would be a motion to whether we are doing and then we'd have to make the motion to the positive and then vote either in favor or against. Or should we start with Center Street? And because it's the connector for a lot of these, is it not?
Yeah, I must add, I could uh
Yeah, so just to keep it simple, I've seen how this the recommendations and the motions go, which is which is painful. So maybe if we could just, they say, if if the intent is to, you know, if there's a general consensus here or a lean toward that the Center Street development is looks like we want to move forward with that into design, if it would just be that one.
Okay.
Um, the other ones, if you don't want to make a motion on them and because because of the fact that you don't want to move forward with them, then that that's fine too. That we say the if we come up to the budget season, then we present it all as in as in moving forward. But if if the indicator is to move Center Street forward, that's the one that we're in, we're engaged with. The other ones, we can uh we'll leave back bring back more information anyway, because they say that is a significant change to the plan. If we have to keep these other areas operating for an undisclosed amount of time, there's gonna be some more information required. So um
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Thank you for that. Yep, thank you for that suggestion. Um, Councilor Lloyd?
Um, thank you. And just just to confirm, the the um structures that are highlighted by the inside the blue line right now are serviced by the utility services in it are either failing or near near nearly in failure at this time.
Yes.
Um, what is our responsibility if we don't make a decision and there is a failure of those services to those, that mean that's a public safety, a public? And would we be um forced to uh build, rebuild or service those? I I would assume we would.
We're absolutely We're absolutely responsible for for the safety of our our residents that 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 we, you know, that we rent to. So whatever whatever means, we'd of course evaluate to say, you know, do we have to reconstruct it in place? Could we build a temporary measure? Depends on how temporary temporary is, all based on the decisions that we make today. Um, yeah.
And I would assume that would be a site, we don't have numbers and I wouldn't ask you for numbers, but I could assume that that would be a sizable investment. Considering we've meant through a number of these reconstruction projects and other hamlets already, and they are substantial to to undertake.
Yes, I appreciate you not asking for a number because again, um but it's something that sounds like we have to look into if we decide to go the route that we're going to. Is that the reality is we'll we'll likely have to do something anyway, because they say if we don't have a timeline on on the removal of those, we should have a contingency plan. And we are good, actually, the camera is actually moving from um Caroline up into Nordic and it'll probably be something we should actually add on to our evaluation list to see what can be done.
All right. So what is the will of this committee? I don't know number of projects in front of us, what's the priority? Where are we, where are we going? Counselor Melhoff?
Thank you, Reeve. I'd like to see us meet with these people you're talking to and then we can see how we can help serve them and the residents of the area, is that even possible? Because if they can see how willing council is to work with them, maybe they would understand and not just kick tires, but then be willing to actually be a partner rather than just kicking tires, is that a good path forward? Like, at this point, we're going, okay, well, if we do this, they will come. Well, if we have a developer ready to do something on resort commercial, then having the conversation with them might be a good idea, because if they are willing to do it, maybe that's not the same as us putting several million dollars on a maybe. Like, I I don't know if that makes, if I'm making sense, but disrupting the entire community on a maybe, that could be a very good thing for this community, but is it possible for us to meet with them?
I guess to me, it would be, you know, similar to other large developments, you know, we've um um, you know, there was one up in the gambling country there, they we invited them to do a presentation on what their ideas were, and we had that discussion. That same invitation could be extended to any developer that was looking in the Nordic area to make a presentation or or like to council. I'm stepping on planning's world because I'm assuming they would take that lead on that, but.
Ms. Gillen?
I I would agree, um like, you know, they've given us some information and we've had a few conversations with some of them um about what they're kind of looking for slash where that type of development could go in this area. Um, so as for like what they might be proposing or the serious of seriousness of it, um, we could definitely see if they're interested in coming and speaking to you guys directly if it might um because if they are more interested and if it would kind of push the project that way to be able to develop that, that may be something that they would be interested in coming to do.
Well, I'm looking at the um the projects that are in front of us, I I would say, and maybe Counselor Radcliffe is more familiar with this. You know, there's a lot of discussions, not only with the community members, which some are full-time and some are part-time, so that's the other thing, that community is ever evolving as well as we speak, so um, I I can assure you that uh CEO Emmons back in twenty years ago would say the community is far different than what it is today in that regard and understanding that we're we're supposed to be building where the puck's going, not where where people are today, so I think that's prudent with uh where we're setting the financial dollars in this community and to be able to um, I'm I'm a little bit worried that once you start cracking open some of this, that it's it's like renovating an old house. You just never know when you start to renovating what you're going to come upon, and that's my little bit of a worry with this Center Street. And um I realize that the community kicked back with losing maybe a a green or two, but maybe that is a discussion with the government uh to be able to allow us maybe to have some more land to expand that golf course, and they're not necessarily losing. Uh, we could also be gaining, so we could make those efforts there as well, so. But um, so what I heard is that there's a desire to maybe move forward with Center Street and uh at this point in time and um go from there. And everything else is, we'll bring some more information forward at at a later date, maybe this year, and then we can um have a better opportunity to maybe discuss those projects, or the new council will have a opportunity to have those discussions uh before budget, so. Counselor Melhoff?
Uh, thank you, Reeve. Um, thank you for bringing up the golf course too, because I know that several months ago we met with the director of Egg and Community Services, they had said they were gonna reach out with the the Nordic um golf course association, is that their name? Sorry, the golf association out there, um and see how to make them whole again as well. Golfing hole, never mind. So and perha- and that there was other plans, um that I believe there were provincial plans on expanding that golf course and seeing if those were actually options that could be done. Did that work ever actually take place?
I can tell you the work that we've done has been the uh doing up a potential design that we wanted to discuss with the community group there on the impact of the tee box and one green where the Center Street's gonna go, um as well as um but if service commercial, for example, doesn't get developed in this stage, perhaps that that plan will be modified again, so. Um, there's, I'm not aware of any discussion about expanding it even further into the other provincial realm, which there that's time, 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 time. But certainly, we were looking at the impacts of the of the service of the service commercial as well as the Center Street and coming up with an option for the golf course for them. Pending the discussion we had today.
Okay, thank you.
And my understanding too is with with everything and I mean the limited golf experience that I had to have and my knowledge is, is if they need to make it a par two instead of a par five, they can they can make it happen. Yes, it can, yes, it can, because then it's just the putter off the green or putter off the tee box and not a driver, so. But anyways, okay, so where are we at? Counselor Northcott?
Okay, um, keep my thoughts here on the whole scope of the whole development of Nordic there, but uh in my opinion, um I think the investment to continue with the restoration of the trestles and and that would be a would be continue that investment to restore those trestles and stuff like that, uh however, I think all other uh investment in Nordic should be postponed. And other than if it was operational maintenance that was required or something like that, but uh there's just other priorities in the region that need to be addressed prior prior to this, so I would say postpone all capital spending in Nordic, other than the continuation of the restoration of the trestles and postpone all spending there.
Counselor Radcliffe?
I just wanted to say that I felt you summarized the conversation very well. And in outline the path forward, yes, we haven't gotten to the trestles yet.
Okay, all right. Someone willing to make a motion to direct conversation? Go ahead, Counselor Radcliffe.
Okay, yes, I I I also agree with your your summation that we need more information, that this is a different direction and uh I I don't think public works and planning have had have had the opportunity to uh look at the unintended consequences or what else would be required to make that change in direction. Do you feel you would, that you need a motion on that?
Go ahead, Director Hanson.
Honestly, um like, we don't plan on stopping the the development plans as they are detailed design. Uh, we'd wanna, we were already well on our way there, having those those plans complete. It's the only, the addition would be looking at the impacts of tying in those existing or or assessment. Um, it's not a budget concern that I'm that because we actually we actually ratcheted back there, a lot of the work planned, that was because the design, of course, included looking at multi lots and multi servicing internal roads, so we our engineering dollars there, we save significant amount of money there, even in twenty-five. So we would have the resources to go and look at what does it mean if we're going to keep these existing mobile homeowners there, so um, don't need any resources for that, and if that's the direction that we have. And then, yeah, I honestly, it it sounds like the only thing that we need to really bring back at budget is the the capital cost to move forward with with Center Street, and then we'll just pause the other developments, the other the other adjacent developments if.
Okay, and
I don't think I, I don't think I need a motion.
Okay, and I I think we've already got two million allocated towards Center Street for twenty-six, or that it's on the list.
Yeah, it might be allocated, but it might not, might be a concern.
Yes, okay.
Okay, uh, Counselor Melhoff?
Um, I just wanted to say that I really appreciate the the pivot um from going full-scale like lot development to a more holistic, generalized approach to better suit the developer coming in and making some of their own um development choices rather than pigeonholing them for that reason, and it's significantly more financially prudent for the rest of the taxpayers in the county. Um, that was, that's a really good choice, um and it really makes it so that the rest of the county isn't developing Nordic, it's, I really, I really appreciate um the big ratchet back on that. Thank you.
Okay. So what I heard was not necessarily any motion coming forward, just a more for, except for information. Okay. Someone like to make that motion? Counselor Radcliffe?
I will make that motion that the committee recommend that the committee accept this for discussion for information. Need any more than that?
Done the agenda, yeah, there's lots of exciting things to come. So I would only, as it pertains to the the high density west, east, resort commercial, Center Street, service commercial. I would just say, because that that would encompass basically the top two-thirds.
Development.
Yeah, the Nordic development, I guess.
Yeah, the minority development area.
Okay.
Would you accept that friendly?
Yes, I believe that. Was very well as to the completion of the motion.
Okay. Jenna, we're good on that then? Okay, perfect. So would you like the motion kind of repeated, Counselor Northcott?
That the committee accepts the Nordic development area presentation for information?
Okay, any further clarity?
Are you okay?
Okay. Call a question, all those in favor? It's carried, thank you. Moving on now, the second part, please.
Second part is the trestles, so trestle one and three are currently under construction with a completion date of July. Um, trestle two, we started looking into more detailed design and due to the location, the structure, it is in more decay than trestles one and three. So on the initial design that we've worked with the engineers, we need to remove the existing timber decking and stringers, which would be replaced similar to trestles one and three. Patch repairs of existing concrete for reuse. The other two structures do not have concrete. And remove and replace trestle vents, which is the entire kind of structure, there's eleven of them. And they're looking at removing and replacing about six. So this option is to rehabilitate the existing trestle um to continue with the vision that we did for trestles one and three. However, in doing this, there is now an updated cost of one point six million, which does include engineering and contingency. So this is significantly higher than the approved twenty twenty-five budgeted amount of six, eight hundred and sixty thousand. Um, so we did outline five options moving forward. The first one is to adjust the twenty twenty-five budget and proceed with construction this year. Second option is to complete detailed design in twenty twenty-five and reschedule construction in twenty twenty-six, which would then reflect the increased budget in the twenty twenty-six budget deliberations. We maintain the trestle as a historic ruin and reroute to the pedestrian tra- trail. We demolish the structure and also reroute the pedestrian trail, or we demolish the structure and construct a new bridge. Any questions on the update? Counselor Melhoff?
Thank you, Reeve. Do you have like a overhead map of that area? And like where the trestles sit, like is it act, is it hugely disruptive to reroute? Like, is it on the path, like?
It is the center one.
Oh, good, so. So it's not like the first one where you can just change where the starting point is, or the last one where you can just finish early?
It is the second one, um. You could go down into the ravine and back up, however, it isn't an end. Say trestle one is the one that's on the way up to the mine site. Yes, that one would be easier not to include in the pedestrian trail. So it is right in the middle, but there is a way we could reroute the trail.
And then if we reroute it, then it is no longer as accessible as trail as what the team was hoping to achieve, but and the team meaning the global team, not just you guys. Because those trestles are also wheelchair accessible and they're they're better for people with low mobility when they're being rebuilt the way that you guys are, have been doing them. They look great, by the way, the pictures are amazing. Um, so I worry that if we reroute it and have to go down into the ravine, it loses the accessibility factor that goes with some of the population. It may not be as avid hikers, um which isn't good either then.
Yeah, Eric actually just walked it, so he might have a better idea of the, if we would reroute the trail for wheelchair accessibility, but yes, you are correct, it wouldn't be as great.
Cal, um, did you have something to add?
Well, I do, I I really, I know we've, we wanted the committee to look at and indicate their support. Um, really wanted to uh dialogue out what our recommendation is. Um, so this is the same engineer that's done one and three, um the trestles one and three, they were, those were the easy ones. You know, this this second bridge really is, um there again, it was it was kind of slated um as the second bridge to look at. From discussions with them, they didn't really have a close look at it, but they've done some non-destructive testing to the timbers. Um, my my opinion right now today is to get a second opinion on the assessment and the estimates. Um, you know, we'd actually have this engineering group provide us a proposal to to finish out, get us to to a to final concept plan, but then we actually had a really good success with using another firm there on the uh the Tonton Bridge, for example, like that was a, that was two hundred and twenty meter uh bridge. It was for one point one million dollars, this is one point six million dollars for a forty million dollar bridge. And if we look at like these bends, you know, and you don't know, and you do not get a good appreciation of that bridge until you actually walk down into the gully and look at this structure, um and the the timbers on it are enormous and there's there's no obvious signs of of like of it ready to fall over or anything like that, it's still a very large mass holding up nothing in the air and then and to replace it with a pedestrian-only use, with so no OHVs because that's was the original discussion with council and decided that was gonna be pedestrian use only. Um, that I would want a second opinion of of the weight care, the weight bearing load and what would be required other than reconstructing seventy-five percent and reconstructing a train bridge at the same time. Because we don't need a train bridge for pedestrians, but that's what they're designing, and I think, you know, it's, this is a little bit of a transition between um uh egg services and public works infrastructure as they started the the project, and the idea was to maintain and make sure that we have train bridges when we're done, but you don't need necessarily a train bridge to carry pedestrians, and you you can construct them, but they're expensive. So I really think that our recommendation is that we, we have the dollars today to go, um, to do additional engineering and come back there again in the fall. We, we camp this, uh, idea for now and come back with a second opinion, third opinion on what it costs to, to get us a pedestrian crossing across this trestle two without, before we abandoned the idea of turning it into a relic or rerouting it or tearing it down. I think there's, there's just too much good wood there to be just throwing away without at least a second opinion.
Agreed. Uh, Councilor Loggins?
Eric already answered much of what I was gonna ask. Um, definitely, I don't think we need to have a structure that's capable of carrying heavily loaded steam locomotives um, at high speed. I mean, this is pedestrian only. It's meant to be kind of a tip of the hat of the heritage that got that community on the map many years ago. And I was just thinking, you know, like, uh, a, a, a bridge built in the style of a railway bridge, but not with the engineering that's necessary to carry heavily loaded trains must certainly be cheaper than trying to reconstruct a, um, a railway bridge or rehabilitate a railway bridge, well beyond what we ask for pedestrian use. Somewhere, there's gotta be some sense made in the one point six million dollars on, was, did you say it was a forty meter bridge? How much is that a meter? That's a, that's a lot.
Yeah. Councilor Radcliffe?
I think all my questions have been answered and I, I think Director Hanson has the, the right idea to proceed. I would be willing to make a motion if we need one to that effect.
Go ahead.
That, um, the Strategic Planning Committee recommend getting a, a second opinion on rehabilitating trestle two as a pedestrian, uh, based bridge.
Councilor Melhoff?
Um, I was gonna ask which one of the options was what you presented, because none of them sounded like what you had said. So if that works, then I'm good, because I was gonna say how to write it, because one through five options, none of them sounded like what you, what you said. Kind of two, but I was like, it's kind of a stretch. This is not completing design, you're asking for another opinion, so I would support, uh, your motion.
Councilor Nurseoff? Councilor Gibson?
Um, I just have a question. Um, has this been inspected by the provincial government at all for stability? Like, is it pulling away from the bank or is it, like, is it, is it shifting at all?
Yeah, so, so the best of my, from the communication we've got from the engineers, so it's, it's a, it's a bridge engineering group that would come out and do those assessments, not the province. Um, they have done conceptual engineering? How would they describe? Preliminary engineering, um, not enough engineering, I guess, in, in, in my opinion, and went for what they've, what they've provided, for the amount of detail and the estimate they provided. We, we need a lot more work. I, I truly believe that, that we need to get, um, they say possibly more non-destructive testing. You know, there was some radiograph that was done, was actually you drill a hole into those large timbers and you can calculate the amount of rot that's in, within the timber. And then smarter guys than me can actually figure out what's that able, how does that equate to what its original weight bearing capacity was of the day versus what it can hold today and how much life is left in it. So, um, I say, I, I really think that there's, there's more engineering and, and these are engineers that have to do this type of work. This isn't something that can be done, um, through any other resources other than bridge engineers to, to adequately ensure that, that we're covered off from a liability standpoint, that, that a deck will be held up in the future. So, um, it's when, so that team has to be able to put their, their stamp on, on some, uh, an improvement, I guess. Um, so that's, that's what our recommendation is. They, it's preliminary at best of what's been provided so far with the estimate of the one point six.
Okay, thank you. I will be supporting the motion. I've already had a few phone calls, people telling me, um, do not make, to ensure that trestle two does get. They, they liked what has been happening with trestle one and three, so please make sure that we save trestle two. And so anyway, so I, I agree with Director Hanson. We should have a second opinion, so I'll be supporting motion. Uh, Councilor Ly?
And I think, um, Director Hanson answered much of what I was gonna answer, but just understanding the assessment. This is, this assessment was done to evaluate the bridge for its use as a pedestrian or to evaluate the bridge as its original use. Because there are similar structures built at the same time on the same rail line that are still in daily use by the trains existing now. So it's not impossible that a hundred year old bridge can be safe, um, for its original intent. It's just probably the lack of maintenance for seventy years probably has a, has a factor on that. And I just wanted to ensure that the assessment was taking into, if it's an, if it's a bridge engineering, engineering firm, they're probably trying to, uh, keep the quality of their work, uh, matching what they do for others. And that would, I would assume would be for active bridges carrying trains, not active bridges carrying, uh, puppies and, and children and, um, lighter, lighter, um, lighter loads at lower speeds. I think my question has been answered.
All right, motion on the floor. Anybody need clarity on that motion? All right, I'll call a question. All those in favor? And that motion's carried, thank you. Moving on to the EV charging station. Go ahead, Ms. Regland.
So the last two items are for information. So Clearwater County has been approached by a company looking to install EV charging stations within the Discovery parking lot. We did supply a letter of support to them so they can apply for grants based on the twenty twenty two council motion. Um, the company is more going off of the, uh, old company that was looking to do this in twenty twenty two. So it's just looking for continuation with a different distributor. And they are looking for, just so you guys are aware, four stalls, not two. However, our letter of support does just reflect the two stall parking lots as per the motion from September. And the, right now, they're applying for the grant. We got the letter in, so we're just waiting to hear back on how that is going to go. We're also working on a lease agreement. The county developing a lease agreement, because we do feel that just because if they don't get the grant, we do, might have more coming. So then we will be ready and not have the leg of the time. And the second informational item is just about the historic core phase one. So we're reviewing the phase one subdivision plan and utility right of way on Tilly Ave and Sherry Avenue. As the right of way may limit to develop a size of one lot. So pending further information on costs, we may realign the lot boundaries. Or we may look into utility companies moving that right of way out of the lot. We found the corner lot, they have two utility right of ways and it did restrict one developer. And so right now, because we are doing shallow utilities out in that area, we are looking at different options and quotes for that particular role along Tilly Avenue.
Okay, Councilor Melhoff?
Um, thank you. I have a couple of questions. Uh, with EV charging station, um, is the original location that we talked about in twenty two, any two still? Like, is none of that has changed? Do we have room for four? Because I know we barely had room for the two, so how, where are they gonna put four?
Um, I've been trying to get more information of how much size they would be, like spaces. I've learned a lot about EV charging stations recently. Um, there are different types. Um, there's either one charging station per stall. Sometimes they can do one terminal for two stalls. So they didn't give me enough information to see if we have room for four or not. We are having some investigation on the sanitary line of the museum. There is a manhole close to that, so that also may restrict the number of stalls we can have. However, we're looking at, until they give us, yes, we want to go, get a lease agreement with you guys. We're in agreement with your lease agreement. We haven't, they haven't given me enough information on the size of four. So I can't confirm if they'll fit or not.
Um, supplementary, uh, thank you. As regards to the historic commercial core, I've done some, some research on this. How big is a normal right of way? And would an engineering company not have defined that when they did all of the engineering for the community in the first place?
So the three and a half meter utility right of way is common for multiple utilities. There are four utilities within that. Um, so yes, the size is there, why it was on the lot and not in the ditch. We are working on that information. Eric might have a better idea, because I came in at the end.
Director Hanson?
Yeah, so, um, yeah, it's very common. The, what, part of the problem was that it wasn't, uh, the, one of the utility right of ways wasn't identified in the great sheet. Um, normally though, when, if, you know, for example, if we were to buy a piece of property, you would pull the registered, the registered plan for the property. And it, it clearly shows that the utility right of way was, was on the lot. Um, it's unfortunate that, um, there was an offer in on, on the property there. And then, you know, looked quickly at, you know, and, and these developers needed us to adjust quickly. And then, but relocating utilities isn't something that can happen quickly, and it's not going to be inexpensive as well. Um, that's why between, uh, our planning team and, and public works there, we're looking at every option to say, like, how can we, how can we accommodate? And one of them is a lot line adjustment. Perhaps, um, either doing either a shift of the lot lines to, to facilitate or eliminate one of the lots and actually, instead of having six across there, only make five or, or, or something along. We're looking at all options to, to try to better accommodate, you know, a potential developer. The cool part is that there's no other lots that are sold. We, we own the rest, so we have that flexibility today. And we absolutely are doing everything we can to work with these, with, with a developer, any developer. There again, I, it's just, it would be very costly to move over a, they say, a, to register a new utility right of way as well as move that infrastructure over a two meters, just to facilitate somebody else's single development.
For sure. It's just, it's interesting that we need three and a half meters and many other municipalities' right of ways are one meter. So I'm just curious why ours is three and a half, when three other municipalities I talked to, their standard is one. I just don't, I don't understand. I mean, I'm not an engineer, so I just don't know. And then I also don't know who's responsible then. Who's paying for the boundary adjustment changes? For this not being reflected in the, in our engineered drawings? Like, we paid an engineer for a reason. So then who's responsible to pay for all of those changes that need, that will have to be re-engineered, re-submitted to get the titles changed? Like, who's paying for what seems like a mistake? Not necessarily your mistake. Please understand that I don't think it's your mistake, but it is somebody's mistake.
No, and really, hon- honestly, it, it does stop here. It, it has, we are the ones that are, we engage our engineering team to do the best product for us. And, and you don't even, this is five years later, we didn't even realize it was a problem until it's a problem. Um, but that, that is our job to review how, where these utility right of ways are. Um, if the problem is, is we didn't even, we wouldn't know how it's gonna affect the developer until they come in and try to put something bigger on a lot and then start looking for a relaxation. You know, other people, if they were aware that those utility right of ways would have been there, and they would have said, oh, either this lot isn't gonna work for me or I build within. It was something that, that came out after the fact. So, um, as with most things with Clearwater County and, and as we do the development, we are ultimately the ones that are be held responsible and have to pay for the cost. Um, it all depends on how flexible and, um, accommodating we wanna be. Because we could just say, the lot is the lot, whether we agree to disagree or not, we could just sell it as is and do nothing. That's also an option.
No, that's good. Councilor Ly?
Uh, thank you, Reeve Swanson. My question relates to the electric vehicle charging station. This, we were approached by a company, uh, about three years ago to do this. I would suggest that if they haven't accomplished this by now, their, their business plan mustn't be very aggressive. Because this shouldn't be a big, big barrier. If we were looking at a level two charging station, many people have those on their homes right now at minimal, minimal cost. It's pretty, pretty straightforward. Doesn't really require any upgrading of residential type or even a light commercial electrical system. And that would accommodate, accommodate electric charging. And even if they're at a level three charging, I think I looked at the power lines that are at that facility, shouldn't really be a barrier to that. So, um, it maybe is something we need to revisit as a, as a community, as a developer or a community, that this is something we can just forge ahead and do at minimal, minimal cost. It's probably about the same cost as one of the streetlights in, in Nordic. So I think it would add at least as much functionality that community has, has another streetlight.
Go ahead, Ms. Regland.
So I did look into options of the county doing it themselves, and it would be, I looked into level three and two. Level three, we feel would be more fitting for the area, just with the faster charge versus level two. In discussions with pe- different people who have just installed them recently, like the school division, they have level two, but they're also parked there all day. So I'll pull out my preliminary costs, um, and they are gonna do a site assessment if, at no cost to us. And then if this company does back out or doesn't proceed to go with us, and it's something that council wishes to proceed with, they will have the document ready and we can submit a grant as well. The grant that they are, we would be able to apply for, and I would assume they're applying for the same one by the similarities of it. It's first come, first served. So that's why they're in such a rush to kind of get it going. So because the grant, I think, was seventy percent on. Sorry, I should have had this open. Um, so looking at it, if we were gonna do the level three fifty kilowatt charging station, which would take approximately an hour to an hour and a half to go from zero to a hundred percent on a car size. Sorry, I don't know what they call car size batteries. Um, so that would be fifty thousand dollars for the hardware and approximately fifty thousand for the installation. So a hundred thousand per terminal, and that's just charging one car. So if we wanted two, it would go up to two hundred thousand. The grant does call, do fifty percent of the costs if you're successful for it. Um, if we would do the hundred kilowatt charging station, which I'm told the average vehicle is eighty five kilowatt max, is seventy seven thousand for the hardware and approximately seventy seven thousand for the installation.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Melhoff?
Um, thank you, Reeve. I literally know very, very little about electric vehicles. But I haven't told that it literally will pull up a map and then show you how to get to the place that has the charging station you need. So if we have these charging stations, it's literally a map to Nordic.
Yeah, so also what I learned is there is an app. So I talked to a company, Flow. Flow is one of the bigger known charging stations. They're manufactured in Canada, so they're manufactured to do our climate, um, and charge. I'm not exactly sure who this guy is, but you would pay through, we'd pay approximately two hundred dollars a year to get our charging stations on the Flow map. And then, yeah, it's an app that you install and it tells you where they are. I don't know if it's only Flow or if there's an app to get them all. Um, but yes, you're right. They, there is an app and it shows you exactly how to get it. It shows you how much they charge per to charger car as well.
Yeah, and then do we get any revenue from the charging, like to offset the cost of the installation? Like, if, if it's?
Did it ourselves?
Yeah, so if, if, if it wasn't this company doing it with just us giving them basically a spot to do it, if we do it, do we get the revenue then? Because there's revenue, I'm assuming, associated with it or not, because there's some municipalities that do it for free, literally as a, all paths lead to Lumbee. Because I just know that Lumbee's does theirs for as a economic development to bring people into their community. They have charging stations.
Yeah, we would own the charger and then the system is more help monitoring if there's any issues, like electrically. Um, and then they would notify us. But yes, we would set whatever rate we would want and that would then reflect revenue on that.
Thank you.
And the company, um, was proposing county get two percent of their revenue. But again, after all their operational costs, I don't know how much that is. That's just what they're proposing preliminary. Again, we haven't signed any agreement with them yet.
Cool. All right, so the last two items then, that we've just, uh, discussed in regards to the EV station and the historical commercial core, you don't need a motion for accepting?
No, just for information.
Just for information. Any other questions on those two items before we move on? Councilor Radcliffe?
Had a question on the charging stations. You, you said that, uh, for example, we get a seventy kilowatt charger where the vehicles only take about forty. So can that charge be divided between more than one vehicle? Can more than one?
I'm sorry, I don't.
Charger?
I don't know.
Oh, okay, unfair question. I've got too many of those today.
We do have a council that may be more familiar with that. Go ahead, Councilor Ly. We do have a council that may be more familiar with that, go ahead, councillor Ly.
For some reason, I seem to know a little more about this than but you you had mentioned Flow. That's one of the companies that are pretty prevalent in the industry. And you'll you'll see your your level three chargers. Most often, they will actually have two, two cords. So they can serve two vehicles at one time. It does split the capacity between those two, so if there's two on, it's a little slower. Uh, the other thing is, uh, other municipalities have used it. I'll use to say the city of Laduke uses the Flow system, and they have had a program where to promote their community, you gotta get free charging when you show up there. So what would be lost in that would be the cost of the energy that goes into that vehicle. But it's maybe a worthwhile investment to promote somebody being captive in your community for three hours or so and take in those those businesses and picture themselves living, living there as we're promoting Nordic. I think it has some benefit that way as well. And and as you identified, there's some fixed costs on the infrastructure to go in there, but that's relatively long term infrastructure tools.
Does that answer your question, councillor Rockliff?
Yes, thank you.
Perfect. Awesome. Is there anything else to this agenda? Yeah, please, Director Hanson.
Well, the only thing I wanted to identify is that, you know, option A, of course, is gonna go through this this agency that's approached us for just the land. And if that doesn't follow through, then, you know, we could advance that conversation of uh pursuing it on our own.
I would agree, because we kicked this can a while ago. I think where this council is still on board with something like that, and I think that's was part of our design for that area too, around the Discovery Center. Cool. All right, so I think we've completed this. Uh, oh, councillor Rockliff? No? Okay. I think we've uh completed this agenda item for today. The rest is for information, so. No, I get ahead. No, so anyways, all good. Awesome. Okay, now moving, we're completed um section six. So now we're moving on back to Corporate Services Continued, uh, sub point one. Ms. Serhun?
Yes, so um if there had been a bunch of changes or or uh direction to um move restricted surplus, we would have went over those now. Um, however, I don't believe there was any real uh huge changes to the restricted surplus. Um, documents for um twenty twenty five through twenty twenty eight. Um, the motions that were made um seem to me that we will be integrating um different work plans and therefore um requiring funding source um discussions um during the I'm sh- the fall strategic planning uh sessions in relation to budget twenty twenty six. And specifically, maybe uh um the June one where there was some um specific asks to come back for more information, so. Um, yeah, no, I don't think there's anything specific unless council had questions about the um funding strategies.
I would like to request in June, uh when we do come back to our next strategic planning, that any of the agenda items on there, you really talk about the capacity of the organization to fulfill those particular projects. I think that's one item that we are missing in in all this. Um, not saying that, you know, somebody can do everything, but just understanding that at the end of the day, where where we where we lack capacity, where we can increase capacity, or what does that look like? Um, and I know we did talk about um postponing a heated storage or, you know, adding um more capacity in the the Hamlet of Caroline. What does that look like organizational wise? Um, you know, do we need to spread ourselves more thinner? Do we're we're, what are we doing in the long term? I think having that for the next, maybe not for twenty twenty six, but over till twenty twenty eight, like understanding where 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 that, where the depth of the organization is and where how much capacity that we have to fulfill that. Because that is ult- ultimately, we can say we want these caval projects, but if we, you know, operationally are are strapped, that that's not helpful in making our decisions either, so. That would be my request.
Councillor Northcott?
Just a question, and I I don't know if you have the information now, but I'm just curious what the mandatory uh like the current and future mandatory financial uh commitments by Clearwater County will be for the broadband project.
I think that would be brought to a broadband committee meeting?
If that could be.
Director Higgin?
I would agree. Um, details of that would be better discussed at at the broadband committee level. But if you look back to the spreadsheet that Ms. Serhun shared at the beginning, at the beginning of the meeting today, um, it does show shows the projected um transfers from restricted surplus to fund over the next two years. So that that's a good portion of the information right there.
Just a little bit more onto that, yeah. Are there, what are those, I guess, the the legal commitments? To have to to uphold the funding from Clearwater County? What are there, are there any legal binding requirements that hold Clearwater County to commit those funds to that project? And if it is, this isn't the appropriate meeting, and it was to come forward at a broadband meeting, that would be fine, I just.
No, I'd I'd feel comfortable in that. That there are agreements in place, funding agreements with the federal and provincial governments to to cover um costs towards broadband. So we have committed to those agreements, and we would, we would be liable to uphold those agreements or we'd be in breach. And then there would be some sort of monetary penalties. Um, mostly, it would be cessation of any future payments coming to the county. Um, but it could also mean that we might owe some money back to those two levels of government as well. To quantify it today, I couldn't give you an exact number, but those would be generally the implications of of breaking those contracts.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. So in regards to uh number eight, closed session is, there's no closed session items today. So I look down to number nine, which is adjourned.
Councillor Gibson beat you today. Councillor Northcott. All those, all those in favor? There you go. That motion means close. Thank you.